Good evening. Welcome to the November 4th, 2025 meeting of the Oshkosh Comic Council. And this is for our public hearing and budget presentation this evening. Normally, right now, we jump into a couple procedural things, but we're gonna flip the script just real quick here, and we're gonna do something that we don't get to do very often. City Manager Grill, I think if you want to take the mic, and then we've got a swearing in to do tonight.
Sure, we're joined here by our new city clerk, Darla Salinas. She is going to be sworn in by our city attorney, Lynn Lawrenson. So we're happy that you're joining the team and welcome, and we're just gonna have you jump right in.
Throw me right in.
You've been here, what, less than?
Less than eight hours.
Yeah. Here we go. Yep, are we standing up?
We can stand up.
Okay.
You swear affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of City Clerk for the City of Oshkosh to the best of your ability.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the city, Ms. Ms.
Thank you.
Happy to have you.
Happy to be here.
Well, first act, if you wouldn't mind taking the role.
Okay, bear with me. Builo?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Spanbauer?
Here.
Flom is excused.
It's right here. Say it again.
Flom. And Mookerhour.
Here. The invocation tonight will be led by Councilmember Builo, and then he'll also lead us in the pledge. We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city. Yeah, go sit down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have my ticket? I do, it's in the mail. Just for those, we've got a bigger crowd here than we usually have. I appreciate that a lot. Thank you for being here. A little bit of order of business tonight, we're gonna have a presentation of the 2026 proposed budget from City Manager. And then we're gonna move into the public hearing, and that's where folks, if you want to speak to us, that's your time to speak to us. And then we'll move into, we have a resolution to adopt, and then we'll go into our workshop setting, where then it's time for us to discuss and ask questions of city staff and give final direction to city staff at that time. So if you are wanting to speak to us tonight, it will be during the public hearing. Once I call the public hearing closed, your chance to speak to us will have ceased and your opportunity will pass. So I want to make sure that you do know that when I call for you, that'd be a great time to step up. With that, Ms. Grill, the floor is yours for the presentation.
Rebecca Grill, I'm the City Manager, joined by the, with the Finance Director, Julie Callis. And we'll just go through a presentation overview of the budget. Like to start with the mission and vision of the city. So our mission is to provide goods and services in pursuit of a safe and vibrant community. And then our vision is to have a thriving and sustainable community, offering abundant opportunities for work and life. So this is what, how we form our budget and what decisions we make. Here's our strategic plan, goals, there's six different ones, quality of life, infrastructure, economic development, neighborhoods, safe, secure, and healthy community, as well as enhancing the effectiveness of our government. This year's budget focus was a continuity of high-quality services, looking at restructuring, cross-training, and alignment of our resources, which is now underway, looking at creating a communication and engagement division through reallocation of existing resources, putting in additional investments in technology to improve customer service and streamline processes, and investments to increase net new construction to build future levy capacity. Little bit of the background, as we started last year, the budget, the $3.5 million of fund balance was used to lower the levy from last year. For 2026, an increase for our general fund budget is limited to $483,896, which is based on our net new construction of 1.384. So when we started the budgeting process, the budget gap was 6.1 million. This was, included no levy increases. So that was something we had to overcome as we started this process. So we have different factors that impact the budget. We have overreliance on property taxes in Wisconsin. I believe we're the sixth largest state to rely on property taxes for funding local governments. Other states have other types of taxes, like sales taxes or fees. In Wisconsin, that's, it's property taxes. We also have a municipal services payment here. You might have heard a little bit about that earlier this year. Because of the state, when there's state facilities, in municipalities, they don't pay taxes. So in order to get some reimbursement for the services, we pray, we take care of for them, we get a municipal services payment. Previously, that was funded at 37.4%. I believe it's now gone up to over 50%, so we're still not getting the full amount, but we're getting closer. We also have levy limits and a debt adjustment that impact our budget expenditure restraint incentive program. We have lots of facilities to maintain, repair, and replace. We're working on replacing lead pipes, P-PASS, water and storm projects. We're trying to recruit and retain high-quality staff. For cities, normally, your salary and benefits are more than 75% to 85% of the budget, so in Oshkosh, ours is 75% of the budget. And then we also need to consider taxpayer financial limitations. So all of these things are considered as part of when we're putting the budget together. And here's a little bit more about the overreliance on property taxes. I guess it was seventh nationally among states for being the most reliant on property taxes. So more than 62% of our funding comes from the, from property taxes, as well as 43% of the school funding. So that's, in Wisconsin, our property taxes are more than double the national average. Levy limits, levy limits were placed on municipalities, I believe in the early 2000s. They prevent us from raising our levy above our net new construction. So as you, I mentioned before, our net new construction was over 1%, but the limited increase for our levy was 483, almost $484,000. So in a larger budget like this, most of our increases for salaries and benefits eat up that 483,000. And then that new construction is the change in value of real estate over a specific time period. In levy limits and debt adjustments, Julie, maybe if you could, sorry, jump in here a little bit. We have been able to adjust the ability to increase the levy a little bit over the past few years because we had a debt adjustment available to us. That has recently almost been to zero, so that limits our ability to increase the levy.
Yeah. What the levy limit worksheet for the State of Wisconsin limits the municipality's ability to increase the levy by the net new construction, as City Manager has been explaining. However, there has been adjustment available. So in the past, you can also increase your levy by the amount of debt that you are paying in the next fiscal year. So that column highlighted in yellow would be the debt adjustment that has been used in previous years. So what it's trying to show is that, based off of the debt payments that are budgeted, how much of that is being used as our levy limit adjustment. We were getting to the point where we were about 90% of the debt adjustment being used so that as part of the financial
Limitations.
Limitations that we have been facing was, in the past, the city was able to flex the levy limit a little bit, but that adjustment was eroding away.
Thank you. As I mentioned before, personnel costs are the majority of our budget. In 2026, it's 44 million. 2025, it was 41.5 million. Here's a little bit more about the personnel budget. You can see it broken down by the different categories. Public safety, police and fire are the largest amount of the budget. So I mentioned, we had a $6.1 million deficit at, when we started the budget process. So one of the things we had estimated was an increase in our health and dental costs. We were able to keep that down to 0% increase, which is pretty much unheard of. So we did not have to increase the health and dental budget by 850,000. We also got a little bit more on the municipal services payment, as I mentioned. We're also budgeting for vacancy savings. A lot of times municipalities will budget for vacancy savings based on larger departments that, when someone leaves, you're not hiring them right away, so you have some savings there. We also had some revenue estimate increases. We have a fund balance transfer from our special revenue accounts, and then we lowered the fund balance transfer from 3.5 million down to 1.1 million. So all of this to say that we have the flat levy from last year. Special revenue fund updates. So this is some of the special revenue funds that were moved to the general fund, the street lighting, museum, senior services, cemetery, Leech Amphitheater, and the Pollock Water Park. A lot of these were being mostly supported by levy funds already, so there was no functional purpose to keep them in their own special revenue fund, so they're in the general fund.
So those special revenue funds, they also were tax levy supported. So as you can see on this line, in the general fund, there is just one line item for tax levies. So that is why you can see the large increase in the tax levy line item within the general fund, is because instead of splitting that tax levy amongst all those different funds, now it is all included in that one line item. So like senior services, you will no longer see how much of the tax levy is going to senior services, because all of the expenses are within the general fund, and that one line item within the general fund covers everything within the general fund.
Thank you.
And there, the highlights can show how much in 2025 of the tax levy was going to those special revenue funds. Now that they're moved within the general fund, it's showing zero, but the general fund is showing a higher tax levy.
And here, just the general fund revenues by source, so you can see the majority are tax and special assessments, and then the other, the other revenues we get, I don't know if there's any highlights, it's kind of hard to see. No. And then our expenditures, so different, by the different categories, general government, public safety is the largest expenditure. They're just all broken out here. And then by fund, you have the general fund, the special revenue funds, debt service, capital, enterprise. So with all of these funds together, the actual total budget of everything is $235 These are fund balances. I don't know if you can go into a little bit about the fund balance.
This just shows that, especially the ones that are being moved into the general fund, we are proposing a transfer into the general fund, so those should end up with a zero fund balance as of the end of 2025, or, yep, and then, around the 2026. Otherwise, we do have a good fund balance policy, we're within our fund balance policy requirements, so it just shows that the city's in good financial shape.
And back to the, talking a little bit more about the tax levy, you can see on the, towards the bottom, under, it says total, city tax levy in 2025, the adopted budget was 47 million, and then we're proposing the same for 2026. This is just the overall information for the revenues and expenditures in one slide. So what does this mean for the tax levy impact? With the $47 million, with the mill rate that would go down to $7.73 dollars per 1,000 assessed value, based on the $225,000 home, which is the average home price in Oshkosh, there would be a reduction of city taxes of 91.17% or dollars. Some of the options that could be considered, an increase of .21, $100,000, then the, there would be less of a reduction, it would just be 87,000, and then you can see the other options, there's 470, or the max allowable increase, what we talked about before, was And we can move into the departments, just high-level overview. The City Manager's budget is adjusted, moving in a lot of our communication and engagement staff into that, as well as funding for a website and rebranding, and then moving from the unclassified account, pay-for-performance, non-inventory supplies, fund balance and things, so that's why you see it going up 1,240%. It's not, it's not just going to salaries, it's all of those different things. Then we have administrative services, HR and insurance, just, we're gonna be doing a mini reclassification. We're gonna keep looking at doing training and development for our employees, so minimal, minimal increase here. Then we have the city clerk, who we just swore in, so she probably hasn't seen this yet, but she's been, their department's been moved into the administrative services, so we're working on having an online portal for public record services, looking at using a new software solution for reducing a lot of our administrative burdens and providing faster speed, as well as using a pull worker management software going forward. Administrative services, purchasing and facilities, they coordinate our CIP process for equipment, vehicles, and projects, our P-cards and things, and other things. One of the things that highlight here is that the library maintenance staff are being moved into centralized facilities, so that's where some of the increase is, and that's when we get to the library, you'll see some of the decrease, and that is for the movement of those staff. Then in the IT department, we're looking at moving to Office 360, or Microsoft 365, provide more collaboration, moving to Open Gov for permitting and licensing and public facing, looking at scanning more documents so they'll be available online, also working on the website, and then modernizing GIS hub technology. City Attorney's Office, there, we have a lot of economic development things going on, so really busy working on those things, putting together more training modules and handbooks. They are getting a new case management software to, so that everything will be more electronic, so they'll be able to search things and provide greater searchability. We also have a new municipal code software that we're implementing that provides more ease of searchability. Community development, we're looking at, there was a, an audit earlier this year, a review of this department, so we're working at, there was, I believe, 72 different recommendations, so working on getting some of those put forward, just developing SOPs, looking at workforce housing, and all, you know, streamlining processes and workflows to make things easier for the residents and for businesses. In the Finance Department, we have, if you want to say anything special.
I think the biggest change was, we reallocated one of the positions that was previously in the employee benefits fund, and half of it went to finance and half of it went to HR, so that was the biggest change for finance.
Thank you. In the Fire Department, we're working on a cadet program. We're gonna be using a fleet management software. We're looking at our different facilities, first stations 1416 and a joint training center. We'll be finishing up our contracts with the townships at the end of the year. We're gonna be looking at possible joint contract or a joint department with the Town of Elgoma, so we'll be working on that throughout 2026. The Library, they've been working on strategic planning, a community engagement plan, and I mentioned, moving their maintenance staff and duties to the facility, so that's where the, some of the reduction is. And the Museum, they're, have a registrar position that is from the Darrell Trust, so that's not in the general fund. They're looking at expanding their program offerings. They've been awarded the Wisconsin Arts Board Collective Communities Grant, so they're working on that, and then, we talked about this before, but they were moved from the special revenue to the general fund. The Parks Department, looking at development of the Quarry Park, based on the master plan, creation of Friends of Park Group, pruning a fifth of city trees, implementation of forestry strategic and management plans, doing a marketing strategy to increase participation and adopt a site program, more partnerships for events at their facilities, a marketing plan to increase facility use, and then update facility appliances, and then increase use of technology to improve the participant experience. And here's just a little bit broken out about their revenues, so the Menominee Park Zoo, the revenues are projected at 106,200, expenses at 105,900, then we have the boat launch, park, special events, Lake Five Cafe, amusement rides, Reed's Concessions in Miller Bay. While we're on this slide, I'll bring up the train, because someone might bring it up later. The amusement rides, the revenues are projected to be 90,000, and the expenses are projected to be 75,000. Move on to the Police Department, they're doing ongoing recruiting, hope to be fully staffed by the end of December of '26. They are using their community impact team to work on homelessness, issues relating to homelessness, partnering with the county and other advocacy groups, working on reducing Part 1 offenses, and then one of the things in their budget was specifically reallocation of the parking software annual fees from the unclassified account to their budget. Public Works, working on the construction of the tertiary filtration, UV disinfectant, Clearwells replacement project, doing some organizational structure review that we're working on, and then these are a variety of capital plans we'll be working on, Ohio Street, West 16th, Scott, West 12th, Clareville Road Sewer and Water, Jocelyn Street, and Floor Court, water main relays. And then for the Transportation Department, we're looking at installing and leasing WPS-owned streetlights instead of our own, except on main corridors, where we'll be still putting in decorative street-owned city lights, audit our street lighting bill and correct any inaccuracy, upgrade intersections with video detection equipment, update ordinances and signs in conjunction with the school district projects, and then for the transit section, upgrade their transfer technology for rider comfort and convenience. And then the next steps will be November 11th. The council will be finalizing the budget at that time and adopting it. If anyone has any questions, aside from what might come up now, you can email me at this email. I have.
With that, what we'll do is we'll open up the public hearing. Council will have its chance to ask questions of staff and give additional guidance, once we get a little bit later on the agenda under number five. So at this point, the public hearing for the Oshkosh 2026 proposed budget is open. We have a handful of residents or people who'd like to speak to us, starting off with Ms. Engel. We're gonna be followed by Carrie Tutsaloff, and then Steve Timkey would be on deck after that. If you wouldn't mind coming on up here. Welcome. Actually, before you do that, what did I want to read? Let's see here. Statements are limited to five minutes. They should be strictly contained to what is at hand, which is the 2026 City of Oshkosh budget. That's capital and operating, and that's really the two things that you gotta remember. There you go. Floor is yours, welcome.
Can everybody hear me?
Absolutely.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Eva Engel. I'm the Executive Director at the Oshkosh Area Humane Society. Oshkosh Area Humane Society has been your longtime partner in keeping Oshkosh safe, compassionate, and humane. We're an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And outside of contracted services with the City of Oshkosh and a few smaller municipalities, we do not receive funding from any other government or statewide or nationwide animal welfare organization. We are 90% donor-funded. We recognize how challenging this budget process is and appreciate the thoughtful consideration given to every department and service that supports our community. Last year, Oshkosh Area Humane Society served more than 3,200 animals, including 701 strays from the City of Oshkosh. 112 of those, 701, were brought to us by the Oshkosh Police Department, and 589 were either brought to the shelter by the Humane Society staff or by the public from the City of Oshkosh. We reunited 276 pets with their families, placed 1,362 animals into loving homes, and supported hundreds of residents facing difficult circumstances through programs that keep pets and families together. The cost of each stray animal we take in is $250, and that is just for the basic care, whereas we currently receive $150 from the City of Oshkosh for each of the animals. That is a gap of $100 per animal that the Humane Society has to cover from donated funds. Our community programs, from low-cost vaccination and microchip clinics and the pet food pantry to trap-neuter-vaccinate-return efforts, help reduce calls for animal control, keep animals off the streets, and protect public health. Currently, we're continuing negotiations with the City Manager Grill. Currently, we're continuing negotiations with the City Manager Grill and Chief Smith to ensure collaboration, and we're hopeful that together we can find a solution that maintains the high standard of care and safety Oshkosh residents expect. Thank you for your continued partnership and for your commitment to a safe and compassionate Oshkosh. If you have any questions or would like to discuss additionally, please feel free to contact me directly on my cell phone, nine two zero, two five two, three two three three. Also, I would like to invite each one of you to come visit our shelter, and we'd be happy to do a tour. Thank you very much for your attention tonight.
Thank you. I will be followed by, yeah, unfortunately, we don't do that, because if I allow you to do that, then I got to allow the other people to do the non-fun cheering, and I don't want to do that, so. Ms. Tutsloff, followed by Mr. Timkey. Welcome.
Thanks. Greetings. I'm Carrie Tutsloff. I'm here because I'm writing about the proposed budget reduction for the Oshkosh Area Humane Society and their animal services contract. I've been involved with animal welfare here in Oshkosh for almost twenty years, and I now own an animal-related business here in Oshkosh. I have to believe that this proposal to defund the animal services contract with OHS stems from a lack of understanding of the value OHS brings to our community and to OPD. A common phrase staff at OHS hear visitors say is, "I could never do what you do." Not everyone is capable of doing this incredibly challenging work. A career in sheltering requires heart, dedication, and grit. It can be soul-affirming and soul-crushing within the span of a single day. They do it because of their compassion, not for the paycheck. As I share about the services animals receive in Oshkosh, I want everyone to ask yourself, could you do what they do? And could you do it for the reduced fee being proposed? Stray animals in Oshkosh can expect to receive a safe, warm, clean place to stay and two meals a day. They often arrive scared and are handled gently by trained staff. Stray animals will receive vaccines and treatment for parasites. OHS follows great disease management protocols involving vaccination at intake, which is why we don't see deadly disease outbreaks at our local shelter like shelters in many parts of the country. Costs money. Staff immediately work to get animals back home, but if nobody comes to claim a stray, an animal will get the rest of the care they need and every possible opportunity to be put up for adoption. Can you do what they do? It's a lot of work, but can you do all of that for over seven hundred stray animals a year from within the city limits for the sixty thousand dollar figure quoted in this budget? Our stray and animal control services used to be provided by our municipal government. Imagine if that was the case today and the budget was the proposed sixty thousand dollars annually. What do you think that building and those services would look like with that budget? The picture I'm imagining as a citizen here is bleak. How would you pay your staff, keep a roof over hundreds of animals' heads, and take good care of them? We also have to understand that the contract with OPD actually includes some services not every shelter can provide to police. The shelter building is available after hours to police who have a special key to a night drop area where animals can be safely kept when the shelter is normally closed. Staffperson is always on call to respond to police emergencies and strays after hours, including holidays and even in the middle of the night. Good Samaritans don't have to house a stray animal overnight waiting for the shelter to open in the morning like they do in many other neighboring communities. When OPD responds to animal crimes, animals come to OHS. These animals are not strays, they're police impounds who are also benefiting from this contract. When animals are victims being held as evidence during investigation and trials, they can stay for long periods of time, often several months. OHS is there for police to help with animals when they make other arrests and there's nobody to care for an animal left behind, or when the Health Department orders OPD to enforce a quarantine for an animal who bit someone. The contract OHS has with the city covers less than ten percent of their overall costs. Shelter staff hustle every year to secure donation dollars and grants to cover the rest of the cost of doing business. The shelter provides many great programs that taxpayers benefit from but don't directly fund through taxes like their adoption program, low-cost vaccine clinics, a pet food pantry, children's educational programs, consulting for folks experiencing animal crisis, all while caring for a building full of animals in need. The work of helping animals also helps people. The shelter estimates they touch the lives of well over three thousand animals a year in various ways. Could you do what they do? If you're a person who works at the shelter, I know some of you are in this room, I want you to hear from me, a taxpayer. I admire and value your work and the sacrifices you make to do it. I want my taxes to support it. A one hundred and seven thousand dollar animal services budget only sounds like an inflated figure if you don't understand the wide scope of the nature of the work OHS does. Please do the right thing and fully fund the shelter's animal services contract. I have seen the overwhelming support this shelter has gotten from the community online after the Northwestern article was published. You'll be hard-pressed to find community members happier to pay a tax than we are to fund this life-saving work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Timkey, and then followed by Carmen Scott.
Welcome. First timer. Steve Timkey, eighteen thirty-four Michigan Street. I'd like to thank the Council for reviewing an email I sent to the group on Monday regarding my thoughts on the proposed pedestrian bridge over Interstate forty-one. Several of you responded back in acknowledgement, and it was appreciated. I'll reiterate some of these comments and add a few additional thoughts here for those viewing while I reference page forty-seven of the 2026 Budget Workshop presentation. The Safe Streets for All grant for the pedestrian walkway over Interstate forty-one. The topic of the proposed pedestrian overpass came up to my attention recently, and I was able to review some of the portions of the October budget meeting to get somewhat more familiar with it. My stance is to oppose this since, while benefiting a few residents, the initial and ongoing expense of this bridge would appear financially irresponsible for our city. Additionally, I do not see how the location of this bridge would have a great, that great of an impact on pedestrians and bicyclists who choose to cross along the three-and-a-half-mile stretch of Interstate forty-one between forty-four and twenty-one. Let me be clear that I understand the need to reduce the instances of injury and death at current forty-one and city bridges and roundabouts, but this bridge just isn't the solution to solve the problem. The proposed bridge with access for a singular neighborhood to a high school and seasonal water park and for a taxpayer cost of ten million dollars simply does not seem worth it. There isn't even a large commercial attraction to that area. From my review of the East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, it doesn't support the need for a pedestrian bridge either. This study reviewed crash data between 2018 and 2022 and found that twenty-two percent of those killed are seriously injured in a crash involving, involved either a bicyclist or pedestrian, and just five percent of those were in a roundabout. Page two twenty-five of that action plan reveals where in the city all crashes occur, and while the little red and pink dots are seen along the Interstate forty-one stretch, there are a great deal more outside that area. There are five overpasses in use now, and unless you plan to completely block pedestrian traffic from those locations, citizens will still have the opportunity to cross their destination with the shortest and most direct route. My expectation of this council would be to utilize taxpayer funds to research and implement ways to make current roundabouts and current intersections safer. I don't mean to sound that I don't care about the safety of pedestrians. I find myself walking over the Ninth Avenue Bridge occasionally and having to navigate those roundabouts, but I can also tell you that that route would still be my preferred route, even if a bridge was built nearly a mile away from my starting point. That would double my route, and if there is no change, and there's no chance that I'm going to be walking that in the winter. And that's my opinion, that's not everyone's, of course, but the biggest issue I have is the taxpayer money involved. Yes, federal money would cover eighty percent of this. The federal government would pay eight million, and Oshkosh would pay two million, but that is still all taxpayer money, and it's actually not all the Oshkosh taxpayer money involved since the property needed to be purchased is not figured into that study and may approach an additional half million or more. The council recordings I reviewed have, had not discussed the ongoing costs for this project, and if I missed that, I apologize. Would we need more snow and lawn equipment, more city employees for maintenance, painting and graffiti or damage control? What is the lifetime expectation of this bridge, and what about the replacement costs? Who is on the hook for that? Here's what I'd like to see our city accomplish, and it's the same for my own household: reduce your borrowing, reduce your debt, reduce the tax implications on your citizens, and don't take on projects that may appear beneficial but in reality do not correct a problem that will still exist even after this solution is put in place. This bridge is the definition of that last point. If we miss the deadline to accept this grant money, that is okay. Avoid the fear of missing out. Opportunities for grants will come up again, and we can offer new, more thought-out improvements for the city. Please consider the long-term financial impact of this project. I enjoy lower taxes and improved current city services, and I fear this bridge would be more of a taxpayer eyesore. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scott, followed by Mary Callen. Welcome.
Thank you. What a difference an agenda item makes. Last year, there were three of us at this meeting, and look at the room now. Carmen Scott, five twenty-one Honor Avenue. Budget discussions are probably the least fun part of serving on any council or board. I want to thank every member of the Oshkosh City Council for all of the hours they give to this thankless task. I say thankless because there are always cuts that don't make sense to some people, and everyone from the City Manager to the council members are often vilified, but that's the job they signed up for. I attended budget meetings last year and know that the overwhelming portion of the budget goes to salaries and benefits. You can't hire and retain high-quality staff without paying them competitive wages. That's just a fact. Since the news came out about the cut in funding for the Oshkosh Area Humane Society, I have been bombarded with comments and questions on what I can do to change things. This is because I have a history of doing animal-related fundraisers. My answer, the same as anyone else: reaching out to the City Manager and Council by email and in person is a start. OAHs is the only nonprofit included in the city budget to my knowledge. I'm sorry if I'm wrong, but that's what it seemed to be. The reduction has nothing to do with the worthiness of the organization or the dire straits of the animals who get much-needed care from their outstanding staff and volunteers. This reduction is actually an effort to pay for the contracted service that the, that the city receives. So if a lost pet is turned into the shelter, there are costs attached to their care, and of course, those should be paid either by the city or for, or the owner, or possibly both. I'm obviously simplifying, and the staff did a great job so far of sharing all that they do. There's never enough money for the animals. We have sixty-seven thousand-plus citizens here in Oshkosh. If every household gave a dollar for everyone living in their household, enough would be collected to make up the difference between the 2025 and 2026 budget with a lot left over to help even more animals. This year, I partnered with two businesses and one nonprofit to raise funds for three different groups, and together we raised over thirteen thousand dollars along with the awareness for those causes. I am grateful for all the OHS does for the animals who truly are the least of these, but I believe that the shortfall can be met by people like you and me who care and are willing to step up to meet the needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Callen, followed by Cecil Streeter. Good evening. Welcome.
My name is Mary Callen. I live at thirty-nine seventy Oregon Street. I'm here to speak on two different areas of the budget. The first is the Humane Society. I cannot understand why their budget is being cut. What happens to the pet that needs to be surrendered because an animal, because a person is going into assisted living or a nursing home? What happens to the strays? The Humane Society takes over when people are irresponsible, they don't spay and neuter their cats. How many kittens come through the Humane Society every year because of people being stupid? The Humane Society has to, has to treat those kittens, they have to find homes for those kittens. I recently adopted my second stray from the Humane Society. I paid a fifty-five-dollar adoption fee. That fifty-five dollars included my city license, it included my microchip, which is a drop in the bucket. I read the medical reports of the cat that I adopted. There was multiple extensive testing and treatments because that cat came in as a stray and not in good health. Thankfully, she's now very healthy and, and a vital part of my life. But what happens if you reduce their budget and that, and that money is no longer there? I read the article in the Northwestern about the budget decrease for the Humane Society. A couple of days later, I read an article on the front page of the Herald that you guys are planning to spend over half a million dollars on Quarry Park. I grew up in that neighborhood. There is no reason to spend that kind of money for a, a square block of, of lawn that is not usable for anything. There's no parking associated with it. Shapiro School is a couple of blocks away, South Park a couple of blocks in the other direction. Why are you spending that kind of money on something that, how much is it going to be used? I don't understand the priorities of this city government. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Streeter, followed by Nikki Heronis.
Cecil Streeter, two five two Wildwood Drive. I would just like, as a point of personal privilege, to ask everyone in the room who has a pet to raise your hand. That's who this budget serves. It serves everyone in the room whose pet is well-cared-for, because at two o'clock some morning, there might be a problem, and your pet gets out, the police are called, and someone is on call from the shelter. You're not getting a hundred and twenty-five dollars for every pet that's surrendered by the police. You're getting twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five on-call insurance that your pet will be very well-cared-for if there's a call, and that's all the point I want to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Heronis, followed by Catherine Wolf.
My name is Nikki Heronis. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have been a longtime supporter since the late eighties, I'm old, of the Oshkosh Area Humane Society. That's when the city ran it, and we were the friends of the shelter, we were the volunteers. So I've been involved for a long time. I support them, I donate, and I spend a lot of time getting money for them too from local events. Regarding this proposed funding cut, to me, this boils down to priorities. What's more important right now? Purchasing the city center for over a million dollars or spending a proposed half a million dollars on Quarry Park, which has been mentioned previously? Because if these are immediate priorities, you will be handing down possible death sentences to hundreds of animals in ours and neighboring communities we serve. Think about what I just said: death sentences. Because cutting funds means cutting and turning back services, like low-cost spay-and-neuter clinics, free vaccination and microchipping clinics, field trips and enrichment activities for our dogs, our food pantry which helps financially distressed folks keep their pets in their homes, plus a host of other services we offer this community. Can you seriously live with yourselves knowing hundreds of animals won't be able to get the services they deserve? Last January, when our director gave you all a wonderful presentation about OAHs, you were invited to visit, take a tour, hang out, and observe the many, the wonderful staff doing multiple tasks daily. In checking with our director last week, not one present council member took us up on that offer. So how can you be, how can you be in any position to judge our funding when you haven't even been there? And I don't mean that in a negative way, the invitation still stands, we will welcome you at any time. So please, do the right thing for our great shelter and all the animals we do serve and will serve in 2026, and don't cut our funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Wolf, and that'll be followed by Melissa Holtz. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Wolf. My address, third three five oh five Lake Beadmore Drive, here in Oshkosh. My address, 33505 Lakeview Moore Drive, here in Oshkosh. I've heard a lot this evening about the Humane Society Shelter and their funding, and I couldn't agree with you enough, but I want to switch the conversation into the City of Oshkosh employees. Looking at their pay tier schedule, currently for recruitment and retention, your base tier salary, annual salary is in and around $30,000 gross payment a year, meaning a take-home of around $20 an hour. Living in Oshkosh, I just had moved here from Gina recently, an apartment, the cheapest apartments you can find in Oshkosh is going to cost you somewhere between $1,200 and $1,500 a month. On a $20,000 salary, I can't see that being very easy for the recruitment of good employees that want to stay here in Oshkosh, work here in Oshkosh. Additionally, people who come to Oshkosh to flourish, that this is a place that we want people to come to grow our community, to grow our city. Things like our shelters, our parks are important, but we have to have people onboard here that are getting paid a living wage. The $20 wage is just barely above a federal poverty rate, and I think we need, can do better. We can do better here in Oshkosh to pay our Oshkosh city employees a living wage versus not even, I live by myself. I know what it is to try to pay all the costs of an apartment and utilities, and I just think where we're at now in the city, while we look at cutting other costs, we have to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one registered is Melissa Holtz. If there is anyone else that's interested in speaking, now would be a good time to go register so I can call you next. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. So I live on Eastman Street. So as a resident, I've seen firsthand how much our Humane Society does for this community. It's not just a shelter, it's a place of safety, compassion, and second chances. They care for lost and abandoned animals, help families through tough times, and bring people together through adoption and education. When funding is reduced, it's not just the animals who suffer, it touches everyone, families who lose support, volunteers who give their time, and a community that values kindness and care. Supporting the Humane Society is more about than animals, it's about who we are as a society and as a city. It's about compassion, responsibility, and doing what's right for those who can't speak for themselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience here that would like to speak to us tonight regarding the 2026 City of Oshkosh budget? Last time, anybody interested in speaking to us on the 2026 City of Oshkosh budget, operational or capital improvement? Okay, with that, we'll consider the public hearing closed for the 2026 proposed budget. We'll move on to, we have resolution, we have one resolution tonight. Resolution 25-564. This is a wastewater utility operating budget amendment, and quote, "from Centrus for repair of wastewater treatment plant centrifuge." I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So move.
Second. Any discussion on the resolution? I see none. City Clerk, if you'll take the roll on 25-564.
Bulo.
Hi.
Stevenson.
Hi.
Nichols.
Hi.
Spanbauer.
Hi.
Flohm.
Hi.
Mugerhour.
Hi. So that was the only action item we had for that. We'll move into the workshop setting. First thing on the agenda for the workshop, we'll talk about direction to city staff regarding the proposed pedestrian bridge over I-41. Ms. Gorill, I don't know where you want to start with this one, but I think we've got some staff coming on up.
Basically all of them.
Well, just a couple. Well, good evening.
Good evening. Just wanted to see if there was anybody else that was getting up to leave. So yes, as I heard somebody mention, we do have several of us that are coming up to just give a little bit of the information, some more information that maybe you hadn't been made aware of over the course of time. Really, some of the background that starts this discussion about pedestrian crossing of the I-41 corridor. While these conversations have been more recent, this issue really starts in the late '60s and early '70s, when County Trunk Highway C became a four-lane divided highway of U.S. Highway 41, which then further became a six-lane highway of Interstate Highway 41. Over the course of the years, there have been several fatalities of pedestrians trying to cross that highway, honestly, in an unsafe manner, not using the dedicated crossings, but trying to take their chances. While I was in high school, I did have the unfortunate situation where younger brother of one of the classmates in my church group perished doing just that, trying to cross that interstate highway where they shouldn't have. It was a group of their friends, and only one of them did not make it across. That brings us to really where we've gotten to now. The idea of a pedestrian and bicycle bridge crossing Interstate Highway 41 really started to become a big topic of conversation with the first bicycle and pedestrian plan that was adopted by the city in 2011. Since that time, it has appeared not only in that bicycle and pedestrian plan, but also in the update to that plan in 2019. Since that time, you know, there have been a number of conversations about it. The federal level, you know, funding laws were passed, and namely, the bipartisan infrastructure law was passed, that created a lot of funding opportunities for projects such as this. The Safe Streets For All program is one of the discretionary grant programs that receives significant funding through the bill for projects such as this. In 2022, city manager rolloff at the time did report to council a professional services agreement that was being executed with Strand Associates for a feasibility analysis. The previous bicycle and pedestrian plans, as I mentioned, there was multiple locations that were shown as possibilities for an improved pedestrian crossing over the interstate. In 2024, East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission adopted the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. That Safety Action Plan had significant stakeholder outreach and public input as well. The I-41 corridor pedestrian bridge was flagged as a hazardous area for bikes and pedestrians, and that's why the bridge was recommended in that plan as well. There are other recommendations in the Oshkosh area out of that plan, some of those that I expect that at some point in time, we will be talking about as well, because they are significant hazards. With that, I think I will turn it over. Jim, do you have anything you want to add on that? Do you want to do Matt first? Okay. We'll have Matt Yance from Strand come up. He'll talk about kind of the, some of the process that we went through, through the feasibility analysis that would retain Strand to work on.
Thank you, James. So I'm Matt Yance, I'm with Strand Associates, and as he mentioned, we were hired to complete the feasibility study for a pedestrian bridge over I-41, pedestrian and bicycle bridge. We looked at alternatives that extended from 44 up to 21. We needed to look for areas that connected users on both sides of the interstate, along with physical opportunities, like where we could actually place the bridge. Bridges need places to land, so you have to bring them down to the ground on either side. There really are only so many open areas along the 41 corridor where that could be achieved. The U-Haul parking lot and on the east side of the interstate and the Lynn Way area were identified as the most conducive areas to bring this bridge back down to ground. We also looked at connectivity for at-grade sidewalk crossings as well, but specifically related to the bridge, that was the area that we had identified.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Melissa Kramer-Bedke. I'm the executive director at East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Just wanted to provide a little bit more information regarding the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. Back in 2023, we were approached by several communities, not only in the Oshkosh area, but also in the Appleton-Fox Cities area, to look at developing a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan so that they would be eligible to apply for the Safe Streets and Roads For All discretionary grant funding that came out of the Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act. Through our Metropolitan Planning Organization dollars that we receive at the commission, which is our transportation program, that's federally required and federally mandated for us to be able to plan for different types of transportation projects, look at safety concerns, identify where those funds should be invested from a policy board perspective. So we developed that Comprehensive Safety Action Plan for not only the Oshkosh area, but also for the Appleton-Fox Cities MPO. We looked at a data-driven process. We analyzed crash data, fatality data, we looked at bicycle pedestrian information. We also conducted some field audit reviews, looking at what is the traffic patterns looking like, where are we potentially seeing conflicts? And then we also did some community engagement as it relates to that process. The plan was adopted by the Regional Planning Commission back in 2024, which allowed the City of Oshkosh to then apply for the Safe Streets and Roads For All discretionary grant for the pedestrian bridge.
All right. Thank you. I just had a quick statement to add to that. As Transportation Director for the city and the staff representative for the Transportation Committee, and I was previously involved in the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, I can confirm basically what they've outlined, that this project, it aligns with the city's comprehensive plan, as well as the city's bike and pedestrian plans. I was also involved with some of the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan in some of those meetings, and I can also confirm that this project has been in those plans and been discussed and advocated for for many, many years. The Bike and Pedestrian Committee, as you know, it was full in a transportation committee, but I know that this project has, like I said, been discussed for many years. But I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't point out that I believe this is a generational opportunity for you to consider. It's an opportunity to greatly enhance and improve the city's multimodal infrastructure. I don't know if we'll have another opportunity like this. It's pretty significant to have the opportunity to get an 80-20, $10 million grant for a Safe Streets For All grant such as this. That's a pretty unique opportunity that sits before you. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this project, which we believe would benefit the community for many, many years.
Sir, you ready for another one?
I can talk about how planning and community development submitted the grant paperwork through the Safe Streets For All. It was initiated in March, there was, I'm just going to sum it up a little faster. There was a federal administration change, so we had the grant kicked back to us, terms and conditions had changed, we had to re-review them, and then resubmit our grant. We'd recently gotten some comments back. We're at the point where we feel the grant agreement is in its final stages, where we're comfortable with the language, the federal government is comfortable with the language, and therefore, we would be ready to put it in the CIP starting next year. Thank you.
So I just, thank you, and I thank everybody for being here, but if you have any questions, that's why we kind of brought out the people that all worked on it. The only person that's not here that worked on it is the consultant that helped with the grant application, but I think between the group here that we could answer most of your questions. Thanks.
Looks like we're going to start with Councilmember Flohm.
Just a statement to council, because I'm a federal government employee, I will be recusing myself from the discussion and direction of staff.
Mr. Bulo.
I guess I'll go. Thank you very much for the updated materials that we've received. You know, we asked for some maps, we asked for some drawings and stuff like that, and you guys have done a good job of answering all the questions that have come up, so I very much appreciate that. I'll admit that I'm a little bit on the fence on this, because in one hand, I agree with the speaker tonight and that sentiment, not to just point at him, but that was kind of my thought ahead of time, but also, I really take it seriously, what the staff has brought forward as this opportunity and how it could be used. You know, I'm looking at Google Maps right now, and I see that there's an opportunity for kids on the west side of 41 to bike to Pollock Park. That doesn't really exist safely right now. I also have some concerns, and I trust Matt, we'll bring him up in a little bit, about that this is not going to stop people from using the other roundabouts, and how do we make those safer as well? What are the options? Is it kind of a both-and, or is it just a this? One of the biggest questions that I have, and I think this is Director of Community Development, is a situation where we're going to be stuck into acquiring those properties. We've seen other legislative bodies have to really struggle when a landowner says, "No, I'm not going to sell this to you for this property," or, "Sure, I'll sell it to you, but here's the price," and it's completely unrealistic, and we have projects in the community that have not moved forward or anything like that, because this would still be something that we have to negotiate, and I don't want to do that in an open session about, you know, what we'd have to pay for. But if we're approving this to move forward, how does that then leverage us later on to be able to acquire those properties at a fair price?
Give me an easy one, Carmen. Okay, so there's a couple of things in there. One is, this grant, this federal grant in particular, does not cover acquisition. If we were to move forward with acquisition, that is not included in this financial analysis. That's something that has to be funded in other ways. Not to say that we don't have some possibilities, there's a TID in that area, there's CIP, there's other opportunities available, but that is something that we would have to consider. We don't know what that acquisition cost would be. That being said, there have been some conversations started with where we tentatively would be looking at placing the two bridge feet, for lack of a better word.
I think you called them landings.
Landing.
I call them landings.
I like it. I'll go with Matt and call them landings. But again, just conversations, and I'm going to defer very gently to City Attorney Lawrence in about acquisition.
So acquisition would be done through the condemnation process? As you noted, you would, we would start that with authorization from the council to begin it. We would do a appraisal of the property, the property owners would have a chance to get their own appraisal, we would negotiate off those, similar to the other ones we've done in the, it's that same process, because it's for transportation purposes. We could proceed with the project even though the negotiations haven't been completely concluded, so it wouldn't hold up the project because of the nature of it, so.
Maybe that's it for me for now.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thanks. Councilmember Bulo, I'm not on the fence with this project, I'm all in. A couple of responses, though, to some things that have been said today. I've talked to James a few times, and I've given him the question of, if you had a blank slate of a city, would you be doing X? And that's never a fair question, because a city is not a game on your computer where you get to just put things wherever you want and get to plan from the beginning. If you could, we would have planned a lot of things differently. Councilmember Stevenson knows that better than I do, so he's clicking his button now to tell us. But what we do know is that there are limited places where this bridge can go. We also know that historically, interstates have been used to divide communities intentionally or unintentionally, and we also know that the City of Oshkosh is going to continue expanding west, not east. And so as we anticipate additional people living west of I-41, we need to identify ways where people can safely get across. Now, do I think that everyone is going to use the bridge because it is in a less-than-ideal location compared to the current sidewalks? No, of course, people are going to be continuing to use crosswalks. And we want them to use crosswalks, that's a whole lot safer than crossing the street. But just because people are going to opt for the less-safe option does not mean you stop creating safer options. Also, I think we can walk and chew gum as a city, like we saw from the budget presentation tonight. We are working to continuously improve everything that we're doing. And so we can say, "We're going to build a bridge," and we can say, "We're going to make our crosswalks safer." I think that's a really good thing, that we can tell our community that we can do two things at once. And then the last thing I say, I want to say is, we do have an opportunity with the 80% funding from the federal government. I don't trust the federal government to do anything, I'm even open right now. So I can't say that they're going to come up with another plan. Again, we've also had multiple presidential administrations, one after the other, from both parties, this isn't a partisan thing at all, that have said, "We're going to have Infrastructure Week." Finally, one got done on a bipartisan basis, and that's huge, and we would be crazy to not take advantage of the opportunity that exists there. $8 million is a lot of money, $2 million for our taxpayers to pay locally is also a lot of money, but if we wait 10, 15, 20, 30 years to build a bridge across that interstate, it's going to cost exponentially more, and we may not have the federal funds to do it. So I'm all in on this. Do I think that we could have better, a better situation if we were a computer game? Absolutely. But we're not, and so I think we have to deal, play the cards that were dealt, and these are really good cards, in my opinion. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
Bit of a disclosure before I make my statements. I do work for East Central. East Central did a lot of the background studying on this. I was not involved at all. East Central doesn't make any money if this bridge goes through or not, so just full disclosure, I am going to give my opinions on it, though. Similarly... Similarly, I worry that we are going to, I mean, the odds are we're probably never going to get this grant again, right? If we say no to it now, if this was an issue 30 years down the road, they're going to, does anybody have a, want to speak to that? I mean, in your experience, or? I guess what I'm good at, to DJ's point, we're growing west. Our population's going to continue to go out that way. If 20 years, 30 years down the road, that's going to be an issue, is the federal government going to say, "We gave you an option 30 years ago. That was your ticket"?
I'll never say never. But certainly, the opportunity before us now is probably the best one we'll ever have. But that doesn't mean at some point in time, there won't be another opportunity that comes forward. But we don't, we don't know what it will be. Certainly, the 80-20 opportunity before us right now is a very good opportunity. And as Councilmember Nichols said, you know, things are only going to get more expensive.
And then a maybe question for Sarah. We talked a little bit about TIF districts in the area. Do we know how funded those are? I guess, is the opportunity to match the $2 million or to match acquisition, do we have?
There is funding in the TID.
Sure.
It is not enough to cover the $2 million, and that TID has also been created for other projects in that area, including some DPW projects of the bridge and the
Oshkosh Sawyer.
Oshkosh Sawyer Plan. So there's a lot of hefty projects for that TID. Not to say we couldn't use it for some of the acquisitions cost potentially.
Okay.
If it's not in the TID plan, we can amend it.
Okay. And I guess, so TIDS were allowed to spend within a half-mile capacity in the property?
It's within the half-mile, I checked.
Okay. Are there other TIDS close? I guess I don't want to like
There is one, but I don't think that it would be feasible for this.
Sure. So if I were giving direction on this one, I guess my direction would be, can we look at some of those other, I guess, funding sources? I know that the $2 million's a big bike to take off, but if there are, I think you've probably well looked at the TIF. But if there's other stuff we can kind of look to offset that, and see how much I guess the TIF is supporting would be?
We would always look into every other financial alternative before we're hitting borrowing or any other levy.
Okay, sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you much.
That's our job.
I just have, I just wanted to ask Matt quick for two things to answer your questions. First, you know, Matt's, I know he's worked with the city for 25-plus years, but he works with these projects all over the state, so I think two things he can maybe clarify for us are, how, what are the, what are, what is the likelihood of getting another grant like this? How often do you see these being successful? And secondly, to answer your question on the $2 million, how are these typically funded?
Sure. So I don't have the crystal ball either. What I can tell you is historically, in my 34 years of doing this, there has not been a funding opportunity similar to this one. The Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act, hands-down is the largest infrastructure opportunity that I can recall. So if you look back, this is it, right? What's going to go forward? Don't know. In terms of the, your match, how that would work, in my understanding, is that will play out over time. So you're not in a position where you need to write a $2 million check now. You'll pay as you go as this goes along. This project does not happen quickly. In the DOT world that this is in, this project will take four, five, six years to go from design to fully constructed. So your $2 million is going to get spent across that length of time. The first two to several years is going to be in the design, the environmental, the full need process, you know, and let's just say that was a million dollars. You're going to spend $200,000 over the next couple of years. The big money is in the construction. Now you're going to hit the $9 million number. So how you choose to fund that is clearly your decision, but what I want to tell you is that it doesn't happen all at once. It's going to take years for you to have spent the money. Did I answer what you were looking for?
I don't mean to take all of my time. I'll be done very shortly.
No, you're good.
Thank you for that. That actually helps me a lot. I think being able to spread our capacity over four to six years is a good point and one that I think we should take advantage of. I guess, again, kind of where I'm at with this one, we know we have fatalities, we know we have injuries out here. I can't imagine they're going to get any better in the next 30 years as we continue to grow. If this is the opportunity to help with that, I think we go for it, especially at this price. So that's where I'd stand.
There was one other thing that I could add. The open land opportunity that you have on both sides will go away fairly quickly as the corridor continues to develop. You will not have the landing zones that you do today. So if you wait 10 years, you're probably taking something down to bring the bridge back to grid.
Mr. Spanbar.
Thank you. I'd echo a lot of what Councilmember Nichols said. You know, I think two things can be true at once. This seems like a pretty monumental opportunity for us to embark on this endeavor right now with the 80-20 split. I hear people's concerns about the, about the cost, and I appreciate staff sharing some information and all of you, you know, coming up here tonight and sharing some further details about kind of spreading that out, right, and those sorts of things. When I, when I initially looked at this, I also thought, wow, this kind of feels like it's sort of a, not a bridge to nowhere, but it just isn't, isn't a perfect spot. And to echo what Councilmember Nichols said, obviously, if we could potentially pick a different spot, maybe we would, but we're, but we're not in that, we're not in that scenario. So I don't want to ever let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And to the, to the point about what you just said, I think development, this may spur development in that area, right? The businesses that are there now are not, may not be there in six years. And with a new bridge in that area, new kinds of development happening, you know, things change all the time. So I think for individuals who are looking for a safe way, walking, biking, et cetera, to get across 41, is it a perfect kind of dump-out point on either side? Maybe not. But it's, but it's going to get people more safely from point A to point B. They can go from there, right? The same could be true if we moved it down to Ninth Street or moved it down closer to South Park. It's always going to be far away for somebody, so I don't want that to be a reason why we don't do something.
Guess that leaves me. Well, first off, I have to start with a positive, right? So I got to say thank you to staff for putting this together, because this is the most we've talked about this in my time on council, considering I've been told it's been on the radar my entire time on council. So I'm appreciative that we're finally having the conversation. I'm disappointed it's a week before we're approving the budget, but better late than The project process. So because council, let me back up, going off of the memo. Yes, council approved the amended bike-ped plan in 2019. I was here. Just making sure that's clear. And then in 2022, city manager put out for a professional services agreement to see what the feasibility would be. That was done by the city manager at his discretion without council direction, reported to council but not directed by council. So at that point, we do the feasibility study, and then in 2024, we apply for the grant. The grant process opens, we submit one. Again, to my knowledge, council wasn't a part of that process, nor should we be in terms of the, in the nuts and bolts, in the weeds on every grant that's, that's done. However, in my opinion, this is the proverbial cart before the horse. This is the biggest one that city staff could possibly do, and didn't ask if this was something that council wanted staff to do. And if I'm wrong, I have zero problem with somebody stepping up the microphone and telling me I'm wrong right now. So the cart got put before the horse, and that staff, at probably city manager's direction at that time, put forth the grant application and says, "Let's go see if we can get something, get this." I am the, I'm a huge fan of getting taxpayer money back into the city from the federal and the state government. I love every single dollar that we can pull and beg, borrow, and barter for, to pull back into this community to invest and to make this a greater place to live. But again, this puts council then in a position of saying, "Well, you've secured this, so now we have to do this." That's what you're asking us, that's the position that staff has put council in, in saying, "If you don't do this, you're losing this, and this will never happen." I'm not a fan of us being put in that position when we didn't give direction to proceed with this, again, to my knowledge. $10 million isn't the project cost, so the federal government's going to write us an $8 million check, we've got to pony up $2 million. That's not the full project cost. This is easily a 12 to potentially, by the end, $20 million project, when you pull in that, there's a solid chance that we're going to want to be asked to put a road in from Patriot Lane all the way to Washburn, which is a third of a mile, and if last count suggests it's probably about, I don't know, $2.5, $3 million to put in a, put in a fully utilityed road. You don't have to do the math, but I'm in the ballpark.
Yes.
Yeah. So, and that's on top of the anticipated quote-unquote "acquisition" costs. This is prime 41 real estate, period. I don't see how you acquire this land that we need for that minimal amount of money, even if we do the condemnation process, which we have not done in my time here, I don't believe.
Yes, you have.
Have we? Okay. I'm okay being wrong. We don't do that very often. It's not a thing we like to do.
That is true.
Because it's a, it's a messy process, and it's not conducive to good relations with our property owners. So the government's going to write us an $8 million check, but the citizens of Oshkosh are going to be on the hook for more like $4 to $12 million maybe, but probably $4 to $8 easily. So again, this isn't all that it's cracked up to be. And Mr. Timkey actually stole my point I was going to make. We acknowledge that roundabouts aren't the safest for pedestrians and bicycle traffic, and yet we have 10 roundabouts between Highway 21, Whittle Ave, and Ninth Street that cross 41. Of those 10, only one have rectangular flashing beacons installed, and that is only because we received a grant, and actually, it wasn't even us, it was somebody else that basically donated the money, to install those at Washburn and Ninth Ave. So of the 10, we have nine that do not have flashing beacons. And we haven't saw a fit to put into the city budget to improve any of those nine roundabouts that remain, since they've been installed in the last decade-plus, to improve the pedestrian safety, which would be roughly $30 to $40 grand a roundabout. So for $300,000 to $400,000, we could actually substantively improve the safety of all of the roundabouts crossing 41 for a fraction of this cost, and I think we should have probably tried to do that first. But even if we do this bridge, it still leaves us with, we still have unsafe traveling conditions for bicyclists and pedestrians. And so we would still be looking at, if we ever wanted to improve it, that same cost or higher down the road. So I think our priorities are out of line on this a little bit. We could have done a better job in terms of trying to improve the safety for those that use this space to navigate between the west side of 41 and the east side of 41. That's a lot, I'm aware. I don't need much comment back, but I don't like the position that staff has put council in on this one, and I do not believe that the project costs are accurate, accurately reflected here, in terms of us making an educated and informed decision and giving proper direction to city staff. Mr. Nichols.
Thank you. And I don't, I don't take issue with, with anything that the mayor has said or anyone that, different than me. I think the only thing I would say is a difference of opinion, that we might have a difference of opinion on process, but I just want to clarify so people don't, in Oshkosh, don't think that city staff are going rogue. I just, I want to clarify that just a little bit. In my view, city staff in 2011, with, with the Oshkosh, with the Bike and Pedestrian Plan, council said, which I wasn't here in 2011, but with that plan, I believe council, when they adopted it, said to staff, "You should look into this." I think that council then reaffirmed that in 2019, when they amended the plan and said, "You should look into this." And city, former city manager Roloff will be the first to tell you. I'm not one to come to his defense, ever. But in 2022, when he went out and ordered the study, I think he was following council direction from those two plans. I do think that timing is inconvenient sometimes. I do think that when we have an opportunity to bring federal dollars back to the city of Oshkosh, we need to look at how we can spend those the best way we can. We can't sometimes, and I know that. I don't think that the 80% funding for all or a portion of this project, however you want to classify it, is the reason to do the project. I think the reason to do the project is because council said in 2011, and again in 2019, we need to consider this bridge for people to walk across I-41. I think the reason to consider the project is because we know that it's going to provide safe passage across I-41 for a number of people. And just to the mayor's point, and I'll say this too, I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget, if we want to talk about flashing beacons at every single one of those roundabouts, I'm down. Let's do that right now, or let's do it next Tuesday. But I think that, I don't think that means that we should cancel the bridge. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can I just go refill my water quick? I don't want to miss anything.
At least you put the thing down if you can get back in. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I just add a comment on the rectangular RFPs? So just to clarify, we, so we do have those at five roundabouts currently. We have them at, the first one was installed at Jackson and Burdock. That was around 2012-ish, I want to say. And then we installed them at the, well, all four of them on Ninth now have the RFB's, is what we call them for short. However, I can tell you that I don't have any data to say if they've made those roundabouts any safer or not. I can tell you anecdotally, from my observations and from talking to the police department's captains, that not all people push them. It's maybe 50% at best if they use them. And secondly, I can tell you that vehicles don't always yield when they're flashing and/or even acknowledge they're flashing. I've seen one of the biggest advocates for it. It was just happenstance one day where I happened to be driving down Ninth, and I knew who this person was. She pushed the button, attempted to cross, and almost got hit by a car. So I can tell you that they might enhance safety, but I can't tell you that how much safer they make them, or if they do at all. I know one of the problems with roundabouts in general is you're yielding to pedestrians, and you're trained to look left, right? So sometimes a bike or pedestrian might be coming from your right, and you're looking left, and that, that can be a problem. So while they help, I, I don't think that that's the best solution, either just from my professional opinion, but that's my experience with roundabout, or with RFB's.
Can I just ask a clarif, you said you don't have data on the safety and efficacy. Does the data exist, and you just don't have it yet, or it doesn't really exist?
No, the only thing we could do, maybe, and I don't even know how necessarily we would do that, but you'd have, we'd have to look at the crash history and know if the RFB's were flashing or not, which I don't have a way to do that right now to know when there was a crash, if it was actually flashing or activated or not.
Thank you.
I don't know the data for here specifically, but I know just stuff I read on city planning, roundabouts are generally pretty bad for pedestrians and bicyclists, even if you put in a light. Typically, anytime you have like a, a transportation network increases flow for, for vehicles, it has a negative effect on your walkers or bikers, and these are like prime flow for cars. So I, to those points, I don't know if like the flashing beacons do a whole lot.
So I, to those points, I don't know if like the flashing beacons do a whole lot.
Any further comments or questions council has for staff, or anything else staff wants to make sure we're aware of?
Biggest thing I'll add, Mayor, is we really appreciate the discussion and thank you for the time to be able to have this discussion with you tonight.
I know I'm in the minority on this one. Poll on, including this in the, actually before I do that, we'll do that in just a second. Can I get clarification? So if I understood it correctly, in the, one of the original CIP drafts, it was 2 million allocated in 2026? I know we removed this from there, so I can't see it anymore. It was 2 million. Just in the last little bit, we've been told that it's really not needed to be 2 million, it's more like spread that over several years. That is a nuance that is impactful to a budget.
Yes. I think that's one of the things that we really need to clarify here. This is a reimbursable grant. So the city will be paying the 10 million and then getting reimbursed from the federal government 8 million. That's not to say that we're going to pay a full 10 million and then get an $8 million check back. It's going to be in phases. So we're going to pay a chunk, we're going to get 80% of that back, depending on the eligible expenses, and vice versa. So what we had done in the previous year's CIP was split it out, but in the total CIP, I believe it equaled 10 million. And we can adjust that as we move forward, because as Matt and Jim explained, the initial costs for the first probably two years are going to be 1 to 2 million, but we are going to have to pay for them upfront and then get reimbursed. So, and that can get built in, but ideally, if you want to look at the full big picture, we should have 8 to 10 million in that CIP over five to six years.
Do...
I'm sorry.
That's fair.
Yes, the 2025 CIP had 10.1 million split between 2025 through 2028. Not knowing the status of the grant, when we first started the 2026 CIP process, we had moved that number into 2026 through 2029, I believe, and then it was removed before it was approved. So, but yes, originally in the 2025 CIP, it was in there for 10.1 million, with 80% being federally funded.
Okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate the clarification. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah. Do, with the reimbursement, do we have to spend a certain amount before we start getting reimbursed, or do they start reimbursing right away?
I believe you have to meet a certain threshold before you can request reimbursement.
Okay, so we're first up.
But I don't know that for certain. I would want to double check that.
Okay. But we would hypothetically be first dollars out then?
Yes.
Right, is that?
One more thing before I do the poll. Jake, if you don't mind, Jake has two images I wanted, I sent over to Oshkosh Media to have him put up. So this is the first one, this is from our own GIS. For those not knowing, the big rectangular in the middle is where a walking path is proposed. I know I don't have, there's no overlay on this one, but you see the L-shaped, or J-shaped actually, gravel or somewhat paved private road, right? Mr. Robbie, that's a private road in there?
Correct.
Yeah. So that's roughly the path that the, a proposed path would take. It would connect on the left to the, the terminus of, at Patriot Lane, that cul-de-sac, and then follow that path, kind of snaking over to 41, just south of, I'm not going to plug the bar, but the bar. And then cross 41 into, as you guys mentioned, the U-Haul parking lot, just for those that are trying to figure out at home, if you're listening, where exactly we're roughly talking about. Can you go to image two? So, the reason I was inquiring or maybe just commenting on the property acquisition, so this is private property. This is, there is a private road. There are homes back there that are, that are accessed off that private road. It's almost, it was family land, my understanding. It's been that way for quite some time. So, this isn't the easiest to acquire at, on face value, at initial glance maybe for me, not knowing if we're going to be attempting to acquire that whole parcel. Jake, could you go back to slide one? That whole parcel in the middle, if that's the expectation that we would try to acquire that, along with we'd have to be acquiring in the condo association over there as well to actually connect to the roundabout, the, not roundabout, the, the end of Patriot Lane, I forget, cul-de-sac, right? Yeah.
Cul-de-sac.
Thank you. Cul-de-sac at the end of Patriot Lane. That's a lot to acquire, that's a lot of acreage to acquire on 41, if that's our intention to try to acquire the entire parcel. Now, in the staff memo to us, there was a, I didn't have it in here, but it showed right where the potential trail would go, or the walk, walking biking path. Is it, this is Mr. Robbie's at the mic, is it the expectation or the thought that we would attempt to acquire that entire parcel, or just enough for the path which would be cutting the parcel in two?
When we...
I'm not trying to give away any bargaining, I'm just wondering what's the expectation?
When we initially started working on this, you know, that parcel is for sale, has been for a very long period of time, so that was one of the original thoughts, is if we did do the whole thing, do this, then there would be land with, you know, if it was a street, a street frontage available for development and sale from the city afterwards.
In the way this is parceled out, I don't see how we don't have to put in a road right away. Like, if you could go back to the one with the parcels, Jake? There's two small rectangles, actually three, two moderate sized rectangles and one rectangle there in the middle of it, just below the big parcel that we'd, we'd be interested in. I don't know how those people get to their homes that are at the south edge of that private road if we don't put in a road. And so I'm just trying to make sure that we have a full understanding of what the costs are going to be to do this. And it's not like, well, we did it, now we have to do more. I prefer that we have the full understanding upfront. Is that making some sense to you?
Yes, I believe I understand what you're saying.
So, I don't know how we don't put in a multimillion dollar road immediately upon this project commencing. It's not a, it wouldn't be a want, it would be a need in my, in my estimation. So I'm trying to, tell me I'm wrong, I guess, is, where am I, where am I getting that wrong? How do they access their property if we're going to put a trail there?
If I, if I'm looking at the plan, it looks like the, like kind of little roundabout thingy is in the parking lot. It comes up to the north side of that road and then it switches back within, I don't know what property that is, but it's the commercial property to the north. And then, really, I don't know, if I'm looking at their plan, it doesn't look like it affects that road entrance onto the frontage road at all. And then from there, you could just acquire, or you don't even have to acquire, you could do an easement of a, like a sidewalk essentially, the whole way down along. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, I'd like to also add a little context.
Yeah, please.
We have some potential developers interested in that parcel, to where they may potentially be putting in some infrastructure in that area. Does that help?
Can you let Jake, no, he got another email from the deputy, or from Mr. Bu, former deputy mayor, Builo, with the site plan that was included in the memo. It might be easiest to pull that up, because I've looked at it 10 times, nobody else is seeing that, what I'm seeing in my head here. Thank you.
It's dangerous to open an email for me and...
Yeah, open with caution.
I like how you cut away.
Good idea to cut away.
So, yes, there's sidewalk, I noticed that there's a five foot sidewalk on the one side of it, there's a 10 foot trail on the other. I don't know how we don't have to put in a two lane road to access those potential properties on the, or those current properties on the south side then of that, of that road, right in the middle of the page. I don't need answers today, but if we're supposed to be giving direction, that's a, that's a 2.5 million dollar plus road that is part of this.
Without giving away information, as to the people that had approached us, I do feel that there's a little bit of negotiation there, in terms of what the city could offer versus what they would need for the development of the northern portion of those parcels anyway, since they don't have access otherwise. Also, you know, we have a few years yet. If we get this grant moving and get this project moving, we'll have time to put in our CIP.
Mr. Nichols? And then I'll be done.
Thanks. Sarah, this might be for you. When, I guess two questions, but I might ask more. The first one, I think you said this, but just to confirm, if the bridge were to go there, would there be opportunity for other development, whether that's residential or commercial, at the end, at the landings of the bridge?
Sure.
And it sounds like for the western parcel, I'm going to ask a third question now. For the western parcel, there are already conversations about developing that in conjunction with the bridge. I'm assuming that the bridge is considered in those conversations with the developer?
Tentatively, yes. We've been as open as we can with them, letting them know that this is not a guaranteed, it's a possibility, and we would want to continue those conversations depending on how council decides to move forward. But yes, they are aware that this was a possible location for the pedestrian bridge.
Great, thanks. And then finally, when we purchase land for intended development, do we always know where all the roads are going to go when we decide to purchase it or council gives direction?
Depends on the project, if we feel there needs to be a road with it or not, but I would say in my time here, I've always conferred with TPW as to, is there a proposed road here? Do we need to have a proposed road here? And, I mean, any good economic development person is always looking at access. What do you want for access to make sure you're fully developing that parcel?
Yeah, but when you get the direction to develop it, do you know where the roads are going to go? Every time?
Every time? No. Thanks for lawyering me.
Thanks, that's the answer. That's the answer.
Not every time.
The lawyer in Mr. Nichols knows exactly how to ask the question.
It comes out every now and then.
To get the answer he wants.
Every now and then, I always respect that.
I was going to get there. Fair amount of discussion on it. Is there anything else from council, before we take a quick poll and give some staff direction? I don't see anything. Direction to include in the 2026 and beyond CIP? Mr. Spanbar?
Yes.
Mr. Fohm, you said you're abstaining? All right. Mr. Builo?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
You've got four yeses. There's your direction.
Thank you.
Yep. Directions to staff in preparation of the 2026, 2026 budget, which we will hopefully be approving next Tuesday, the 11th. This is our time to discuss any and all other parts of the budget that we see fit. Council, do you have anything in particular? I have a couple things and a couple staff members that I'm going to invite up, but Mr. Fohm, looks like you want to press your button. You go right ahead, it's all yours.
I have a few things. So council's aware, I'm going to be introducing an amendment regarding the animal care fund to increase to 2025 levels. My rationale for this is, is actually rather, rather simple, and it goes beyond just the Humane Society, but any other nonprofit that may be engaging in a contract with the city of Oshkosh in the future. If we're going to re-enter contract negotiations with a nonprofit, one that we rely on for providing a service that we would otherwise have on, on the tax levy, frankly, I think it's poor form to go ahead and slash the budget of what we provide to them, and then enter contract negotiations after the fact. I would rather have that done first, to right-size the service, to right-size the budget, and then proceed from there. So, I'm, I'm not happy with how this went down. The Humane Society does a lot for our city, and I think it's poor form for us to go ahead, cut the budget, and then ask questions later, and then go ahead and renegotiate their own contract. I think it does present an issue in how we do business and how we contract with other nonprofits in the city. And I don't want us to have that kind of reputation where if you contract with the city of Oshkosh, we are more than happy to cut your legs out from under you whenever we feel like it. So, for this, I'm going to be offering an amendment. I can circulate it with other members of council, and I'd like to start a discussion
If you want to do that now, that's, let's just do that now, and then we can keep moving on to other topics.
Yes.
So, your formal amendment is to, can you be clear?
So, I'm not going with a 2.5% increase. I am putting this specific line at, increasing it by 47,600 to go back to the 2025 budgeted amount, so that's an increase of $47,600, and that will come out of the general fund balance for this year specifically.
Sorry, you spoke so quickly. Can you repeat it a little bit slower for us?
Send that, so she has it.
Thank you.
But in essence?
In essence, we're going to be budgeting at 2025 levels with our contract with the Humane Society.
And your funding source?
Is undesignated general fund balance.
You didn't, did you use the word move for that?
Yeah. I'll move.
He moves for the budget amendment. Great. Is there a second to Mr. Fohm's budget amendment?
I'll second it.
Discussion on the amendment.
Go ahead. I'd like to first bring up Chief Smith to talk about how we got to this, why, the rationale behind it, and clarifying, you know, the, the whole budget process with this contract.
Yeah, and sorry, just because he's going to answer it, if you don't mind, did we cut anyone's legs out from under them when we did it?
I'd like to address that first.
Yeah, thanks.
We actually began negotiations in September. We met with the Humane Society, and we provided a, a proposal, and we got a counterproposal last Wednesday. We did not cut anybody's legs off from underneath them. So now, now in general, just like, do you want to go over what this contract does provide, what the service is? Because as everybody up here, and I think most people that came know, we don't, as a city, do donations to nonprofits. We contract for services when it's appropriate, and that's what this is. So if you could just kind of cover what this contract gets us and why we've had this historic relationship. Yeah, to give you some history on this, as it was spoken to earlier tonight, we've had a longstanding arrangement with the Humane Society. We typically, every three years, we have a contract, and we renegotiate it at that point. And then, this year was particularly unique because of the budget issues that we were running into, and we were tasked as a city to look at all of our expenditures and to find, find areas that potentially were, we could find efficiencies associated with this. And it's certainly, we all love animals. It's not, it's not a, a decision about whether or not animals should be treated well, we, everybody wants animals to be treated well. But we, we also had to look at this as a business decision for taxpayer dollars. And we wanted to right-size the contract based upon what our peers around us were funding, and specifically, the city of Appleton, Nina, Fond du Lac. And when we reviewed what they were spending, they were spending far less than what we are spending for like services. So we tried to size the contract appropriately to what other communities around us are doing. As a matter of fact, our, our model right now is a lump sum payment, and we're working towards what the other communities have, which is a per, per animal served payment. And we're currently negotiating with them at this time. We had good, good discussions this morning, we met with them this morning, and we think we're going to get there. We just, we have to finish those negotiations. As part of that, is animal served, does that cover every animal that they may serve? Is that, the animals that we call them to serve, or any strays? How, how does that number get delineated? Well, in, in our current contract, it's not clear. You could argue either way that it covers all the animals that are strays, as well as animals that the, that the police department brings in as impounds. So we want to clarify that in the contract, very similar to what, what other humane societies are doing. But we are moving towards covering any stray animal that is found within the jurisdiction of the city of Oshkosh. Not the town of Algoa, not Black Wolf, but just the city of Oshkosh. And they have contracts with other municipalities, correct? The Humane Society does? We understand that they do serve other municipalities, yes. That was based upon the conversation today. And from my understanding, there's still some ambiguity of what levels that they pay per animal as comparable, like the saroc, is that correct? Yes. Yeah. I'll hold off right now.
Mr. Nichols?
Thanks. So just, just to play that back, just so that I understand, two months ago, we started a conversation with the Humane Society to make sure that Oshkosh citizens weren't paying more than our peers were paying for similar services.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And, and we heard back from them last Wednesday, so... And we heard back from them last Wednesday, so six days ago.
Yes.
And so those conversations, I'm assuming, about the contract itself are ongoing. Is that right?
Yeah, we actually, we met with them this morning, the city manager and I did, to further the negotiations. We're, we're, there are a lot of pieces to a contract, as you're quite, all of y'all are quite aware of, and we're trying to work through each of those pieces. Again, we had very substantive conversations this morning, and we're gonna get there. We just, we need to continue the negotiation side of this.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful, and I appreciate you talking about the contract itself, because time and time again, in my job, I will pull out a contract I negotiated four years ago, and I'll say, oh my gosh, I really wish that I had clarified X or clarified Y, and the thing that you're looking for just isn't there. And so I think now, with all of the public attention and scrutiny into our relationship with the Humane Society, I think we're gonna have a better contract than we would otherwise. Think clarifying things like which animals are included, that's pretty important if you're talking about the Humane Society, I would think. So we're gonna end up with a better contract, which typically means you're gonna have a better relationship. And that's something we would have done anyway. This isn't just an attempt to cut out the legs underneath the Humane Society and take away $40,000 from them, right?
That's correct. We actually, again, we're trying to right-size the contract in comparison to what other, what other communities around us are doing. In our survey of other communities, we are, we are paying far more than everyone. And we wanna make sure that we're providing the same services to our, to our taxpayers that other communities are doing to their taxpayers.
And I appreciate that. I believe that we should continue the conversations with the Humane Society. I know that if we get to the point where financially, the numbers contained in the budget are not the numbers that the Humane Society and Oshkosh agree to, again, contract takes two signatures, so these are ongoing conversations. That contract will say what the Humane Society believes that Oshkosh should pay it when they finally sign that contract. I will say that, and if that contract is greater than the budget amount, city manager or finance director, I'm assuming you would come to council and ask for an amendment at that point, is that right? That's incredibly helpful context. And so I think we move forward today with our best estimate of what we think, where they think that contract is gonna land. I have, so I will vote against this amendment. However, I would like to change the funding source, and maybe I want clarification on this, so I might have a question, but I'm amending an amendment at this point, and so I wanna clarify that, but I'll ask the question before I make the formal amendment. We had a conversation earlier today about the train at Menominee Park. My understanding is there's alternate funding sources that are gonna fund that train in 2026 outside of the city budget. Is that, do I have that right?
Correct. So right now, the way it is in the budget is with the assumption that donations would fund the purchase of the train, increase revenues, and the 2025 ARPA adjustment will help fund the other infrastructure, like the shelter for the train. So there's no tax levy or general fund dollars going towards the train in the 2026 budget.
But that, just to clarify though, that the $50,000 that council allocated towards the train, only about $7,500, $8,000 of that has actually been used to date, is that right?
Correct.
So 42-ish is sitting out there, just doing nothing today? Then my amendment would be to change the funding source to that $42,000 that was previously allocated to the Menominee Park train, if this amendment goes through, to be used towards the Humane Society. But again, I'll be voting against the overall amendment, I just would like the funding source to be something we've already allocated, that's not currently being used and hasn't been used in the way we allocated it.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the amendment. So the only thing that can be discussed at the moment is the funding source for the amendment. Mr. Flohm, your button is pressed, if you still want the floor.
I'm happy with that. For me, this would be a one-time item, and then once the contract negotiations are finished, we would right-size from there. That would be the appropriate time to then proceed in the FY 2027 budget with a different amount, so I'm happy with that to be a one-time item.
Mr. Beal?
Just checking with Finance Director Coleman, because obviously, we're just moving money into different buckets. Is the money there and available for us to use this way if it passed?
I guess that would depend on if we're funding the train, because that money, I think, even though it wasn't spent in 2025, is supposed to be to help build the facility to house the new train that is gonna be purchased through donated funds, so.
My understanding is we don't need a shelter for it anymore for the new train, so.
Yes, I just wanted to address, one, the reason why the funds weren't spent that we requested. We couldn't get any, we would have to do some archaeological testing before we could do any type of digging in that area. Before the train opened, was it possible? So we waited, we're gonna wait till after the season to construct something. In the meantime, we started having conversations with our community partners, who came up with the on-land train, as well as some potential donors that are interested in that. If the train changes to an on-land train, we do not expect to utilize that 40,000, 42,000. The train, we would be securing inside the zoo perimeter fence, it would be on security cameras and so forth. So that is correct, but I just wanted to address why we didn't spend those funds.
Thanks.
I don't see anybody else's buttons pressed. Any other further questions on the motion to amend the funding source for the motion to amend to the 2025 budgeted number? I see nothing. If you'll take the roll on the motion to amend the funding source on the motion to amend.
Beal?
Aye.
Stevenson?
No.
Nichols?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Buberhour?
No.
Four-two.
Okay. So as it is right now, the motion to amend has been amended. We would be funding at the 2025 level, and the difference would be funded with the unused allocated funds for the Parks train, and that's what's on the floor at the moment. And Ms. Grill, looks like she would like to tell us something.
I just wanted clarification, so that those amounts are different?
They are.
Yes.
So just wanna know that after the 42,500, what will the rest of the money be coming from the general fund?
My intention was that it wouldn't, because we designated a fund that would be depleted, so we would cap out.
So it would?
Depending on whatever's left in the train.
It would be 100, I'm sorry, it would be 102,005?
102 instead of 107.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know, it's a completely different motion than from the original one, it's changing the budget amount and the funding source. I don't know, I'm very confused, but.
The men, the motion to amend was, had nothing to do with the dollar amount, it only indicated the funding source.
And we run out of money in that funding source, at around 102,000, and so we have $5,000 unfunded at that point.
So then, Mr. Mayor, in order to clean that up, I will then move to amend that to, drop it to 102,500 instead of 107,500 to get rid of the shortfall.
Second.
Can somebody give me the exact dollar amount on that, so I can have that written down when I can recite it? Ms. Coleman's is gonna help us on.
I think we're talking about 42,500 instead of 47,600, correct?
Carry the one.
I don't even know what the original number was, off the top of my head.
47,5, I think.
47,6, right?
47,6, yeah.
Minus 42,5.
Yep. Can you, would you be able to? So the 2025 budget amount was 107,6, is that correct? Okay. So we're at 102,5, that's where I wanna be at.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, maybe.
It's close.
All right, so currently on the floor, we have a motion and a second to amend the total dollar amount down to 102,5. So it'll be using 42,500 of the unallocated, excuse me, the allocated and unused train funds, and that's where we currently sit. Am I correct in that? I see a lot of nodding heads, and we're not supposed to do that anymore. Nobody laughs anymore on this. No, 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 no. No, I've burned that one out enough, apparently. Okay. Any discussion on the motion to amend it down now to that amount? I see nothing. Please take the roll on the motion to amend, which was the motion to amend, down, the amount down to 102,5.
Beal?
Aye.
Stevenson?
No.
Nichols?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Buberhour?
No.
Four-two.
So now we are at the motion as amended twice. This is to fund, in the budget, to fund the Humane Society contract at 102,5, with that difference being the unused allocated train funds. Are we gonna do?
I'm asking a question. It's not an amendment, it's just a question. It's a question. I'm just curious, so this is emergency shelter for pets. I'm curious, what other emergency shelters do we fund as a city? Whether that's Christine Anne, or Day by Day, which?
We don't fund any.
So we don't fund any emergency shelters for people?
No.
But we're being asked to increase funding for emergency, emergency funding for pets, am I right?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna clarify that. Thanks.
Mr. Beal?
You touched on a little bit of what I was gonna say, now that we've gotten the amendments and amendments and amendments on top of that. Just for clarification, I have two rescue dogs, and Nikki brought up, you know, the tours of OACP, or O, the Humane Society. Yes, I have OACP written down for a reason, because I have toured the Humane Society when I worked for Oshkosh Area Community Food Pantry. We were partners, and any dog food that came into the human pantry, I would drive it over there, and we had a great partnership, and I believe they still do that. My kids have volunteered there, they're a great nonprofit. The long and the short of it is, we do not give donations to nonprofits. Day by Day, Community Pantry, Solutions Recovery, Nova Counseling, Boys and Girls Club, all of these are fantastic nonprofits, Christine Anne, like you said. Anything that is above a standard contracted rate would be a donation. You have a contract for service, and if, and I trust our city staff to come up with a fair and reasonable contract for that. Now, we need to look at, is it like service for like service? We need to have a clear, clearer number on how many animals that we are providing service for. We need to have clear contracted delineations into, this is the animals that count towards this contract, these are the animals that may not. With all that being said, my vote tonight will be to stick with the funding that is in the proposed budget, knowing that when you have this contract, and I've shared this with you, Dean, that when you have the negotiations, if it needs to be adjusted, bring it back to us and we can adjust it. But I, we sat in a room and we told every department head, review every contract that comes forward. You reviewed every contract that came forward. This would be the same if it was for walkie-talkies, or, you know, cameras, or anything else. I would expect you to review the contract to make sure we're getting like service with other communities for like money. If that, and it's not my job to negotiate the contract, I wanna be clarifying that too. This is city staff's job. It is my job to make sure you do that under the guidelines that we give you. And so I'll be voting against this amendment and for the original budget, and with the understanding that you can bring us back an amendment if we need it. I don't foresee that, but that's, that's the guidelines that I've been operating under.
Yeah, if I could speak to that, Mayor? That's fully our intention. If we, if we end up negotiating and coming to an agreement with the Oshkosh Area Humane Society, and the contract amount is more than the $60,000 that we projected as a budget, which is purely a budget, we're suddenly gonna come to you at some point next year and say, we need more money. And I'm confident that council will go, okay, here's more money, we'll figure out how to do it. But we are, again, we just met today to negotiate more position on the contract, and it puts us in a difficult position when we are projecting a number that we are wanting to do. And we think as a city, we want to do well by the, by the, all the citizens that we serve, and specifically within this contract, we want, again, wanna make sure that we do things as it relates to everything that we do here in the city and funding that's likewise everywhere else. So if it's less, we're gonna come back and say we didn't spend it all. I mean, it goes both ways. But if the contract, if our, if our final number comes out higher, we're coming back to you and saying, we need more money.
So just one, one quick point on that, and this is, I've gotten so many emails, I know we all have, because we see when they're on council. Got several phone calls, I've talked to people all over the place, and I've gotten several times the threat of, well, if you vote for this, I will never vote for you again. And I understand that, and as a city council member, like, I always, I hear that. But also, I vote too. And I won't be able to vote for me if I undercut our city staff's ability to negotiate a contract. I, you know, I have, I have my own vote that I have to think about too. And that's just honestly, the way that I think that this process should be, is our city staff has to have the power to negotiate. And with that, that's gonna be how I'm voting tonight.
So I struggle with this from a procedural perspective, because we just negotiated an open session and potentially diminished our negotiating power. And that's exactly what we're not supposed to do. So, 'cause if we give a budget amount, then that's what the contract's gonna come in at. I think I almost heard the chief kind of allude to that almost slightly a little bit in one of his comments, a little bit, a little bit. And I'm gonna tie that to, we had a different discussion at the last council meeting, where I made a comment about if we put 14 million into a public safety and fire training center budget, that's where it's gonna come in at. So I'm just correlating those two, just interestingly at least. I don't like negotiating in public, and two, it's not supposed to be us negotiating. Mr. Beal touched on that point. City staff is doing their work right now. I'm disappointed that we are in open session, giving direction to staff on what they should be, what we believe is the best guidance. That would have been a topic best suited probably for a closed session than in open session. Mr. Nichols?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I believe it's you that chairs the meeting, and so I would hope that in the future, if you feel like we're negotiating an open session, you would cut us off, rather than admonishing us after the fact. That'd be my request there, but I also don't believe that we negotiated an open session. I believe we're discussing a budget, and we're telling, just like every other line item in our budget, you as staff can spend this number without additional approval. And I think that's what we're doing today. And they're gonna go negotiate the contract that we have with OHS, and that number will either be that number or less, but talking about the $60,000 number today doesn't change the conversation. That line item is in the budget. So I don't believe that we negotiate an open session. I asked the question early on in my comments, if that number is higher, would they come back to us? They said yes. That's true whether it's for an animal shelter, or a bridge, or anything else that's specifically budgeted. Do I have that right? So, so I don't believe we negotiate an open session, but I would ask, in the future, if you feel like we are negotiating an open session, rather than admonishing us after the fact, you would use your power as mayor and chair at this meeting to interrupt us in real time.
Mr. Flohm?
I agree, full stop. This is a budget meeting, we're allowed to discuss the budget, this is a budget line item, and frankly, it's a bit ridiculous that you're gonna say that we have the, that we should go into open sessions that have discussed this, the budget line item, that we have the power to discuss now and do the amendments now. Or would you rather do it on the 11th? I mean, frankly, it's not up to us for negotiations, but also, at the same time, it's up to us for the budget, and this is our only opportunity to do that? You said in the last meeting, you don't want any amendments discussed on the 11th, and this is the time to do that now. And it's within my right to offer an amendment. So no, I don't think we're negotiating an open session.
Any additional comments or questions? So as we will call the roll on the motion to amend, as amended, we're at 102,5. We're using unused but allocated 2025 funds that were designated for the Menominee Park train to supplement the budgeted, the difference between the budget as presented by staff. That's where we're at right now. If you'll take the roll.
Beal?
No.
Stevenson?
No.
Nichols?
No.[1748.33]
Spanbauer.
No.
Flom.
Aye.
Boogrower.
No.
Any other, council, any other questions for staff in any aspect of the budget? Mr. Nichols.
Thank you. It's not a question, it's a comment. And I know we don't want to get into the habit of us all going down the line and saying, this is great, thank you so much for all the hard work and acknowledge the hard work. But I know you, we do appreciate all your work. I do want to acknowledge that last budget season, I specifically said that I would like us to treat, the city's not a business, government's not a business, but I would like just to treat the budget process more like I'm used to seeing a budget in my professional life. And that means you're managing the middle of the page. You're actually going through and you're looking at every line item and whether or not it's necessary. I'm glad we did that here, not just related to the Humane Society, no, we're just off that vote, but every single thing in the budget was looked at. Everything was restructured and talked about. And so I really appreciate with this budget, I think there will be some pains going into 2026, we know that. But I think with this budget and the planning that's going on in Oshkosh right now, everything from money allocated to take services out of this building and put them on the internet to restructuring staff to make them more efficient to the people of Oshkosh, I think it's bringing us into the 21st century. Maybe 25 years too late, but we're getting there. And so I think this budget is one that staff should be very proud of. I think this budget is one that council should be very proud to vote on next week. And so I want to, I guess, end by saying that a budget is a statement of values. And I think the staff has accurately represented values of council when presenting this budget to us. So thanks.
Mr. Flom.
In terms of what we're facing as a city, we have a lot of financial pressures. We have a lot of state laws that need to be changed, which we have to operate under, which are outmoded. Personally, I think we've done the best job that we possibly can. Is it perfect? No. Is it better than last year's? I think so. Just from an overall process perspective, I think staff has done a great job on that. And this is our opportunity to have a public hearing, engage people, engage ordinary citizens of Oshkosh and how their budget works and where their tax dollars are being spent. I know we have some people here who would prefer to have everything be very cut and dry, but this is the opportunity to have that forum. So I appreciate it. I think this is a, a solid advancement over last year's budget. Are there going to be fiscal pressures? Yes, there always will be. And there will always be pressure from Madison, there will always be pressure from different people who want to see different things in the budget, but that's why we have these conversations. So I, Director Collins, you and your team have done a wonderful job with this and thank you again.
Chief Smith and then Parks Director Maurer, if you guys wouldn't mind coming on up and even Mr. Robbie, too. I've got three things, one for each of you. During the process, actually, Mr. Nichols kind of touched on it, this year's budget process has been different. Different is good, different is fine. We've been trying to become more efficient with our process and generally, we had given staff the ability to talk on some of the highlights, some of the things that are going on, some of the big things. We may have missed that a little bit during one of our, our budget workshops. Mr. Smith, or Chief Smith, your community action, excuse me, your community impact team, the one who's working in the downtown space?
Sure.
Working with our homelessness pop, issues that we have in there, working with some of the folks that are in that space and could use some help. That was a big thing from last year's budget. And I was just wondering if you wanted to tell the public, how's it going and where are we going with that?
Absolutely. Just to recap a little bit, last year, there was, well, not even during the budget time, there was community meetings that occurred from essentially February, March of 2024, going into the summer of 2024, where we had members of our community coming together going, we have a, we have an issue with our homeless or unhoused and as a city, as a community, we need to look at this differently. And at the end of the day, the, these two committees that were meeting decided that there was, one thing we didn't have was outreach. And the only people that do outreach within this community right now is the police department. We're out there 24/7 and we're working within the community. And we have relationships with members of the community, no matter your station in life. We're talking to everybody. And ultimately, council, in their wisdom, along with the partnership with the county to provide additional social worker activity and donations from the community itself, came together as a three, as a three-legged stool and said, let's do this. And we funded, we funded staff, we used community development block money to fund a location. We were able to find a business owner who was really excited to help us. That business owner, who doesn't want any accolades, gave us a below-market rent on the facility. He did the full build-out of the facility at no charge to the city. He did it because he wanted to do right for, for the community. And in June, we opened up our homeless outreach center. It's 101 Algoma. We have our behavioral health officer team there that's currently housed there, which is one police officer, one service animal, everybody loves Gemma. And then we also have the social worker that's assigned to the behavioral health team. We also have a sergeant who's been selected and he is running our homeless outreach at this point. And we're working towards naming an officer to go to that, to go in there and work along with him. And the county has hired an additional social worker to help with the homeless component here. So it's a team effort that the city is working with the county, which doesn't happen all the time, and also with the community to, to help those who are suffering from homelessness. So I've got really data here on what we have been doing, but the story really is in the details that I'm going to share with you. Just in, just got the report yesterday for October and we connected 18 of our unhoused homeless individuals with resources. We've actually made contact with 138 homeless individuals since June to start providing the resources. To share with you some of the stories, and this is where it's really cool with what we're doing. This is where we're impacting at the street level. And this is one of the things we talked about last year, that we do a lot of meeting, we do a lot of talking, but there's not a lot of direct impact. So there was a cognitively delayed female from New York that moved to Oshkosh in order to live with friends who she met on social media. The female from New York also had numerous behaviors that were hard to control and live with. Her friends ultimately kicked her out after living with them for only a couple of days and she was from New York. The female from New York was now homeless in Oshkosh without any services. Our team worked together with Human Services to keep this female safe with some of her basic needs being met. Our co-responder was able to find funding to bus the female back to New York to her family and drove her down to Milwaukee to ensure that she got on the correct bus. We also coordinated with the female's mother who assisted in picking her up from the bus station in New York. One afternoon in the summer, our community impact team was notified of a fight that was occurring at the sundial. Our team deployed and arrested an adult homeless male for numerous charges related to the assault that had occurred. The arrested male was very intoxicated and was spoken to about different sobriety and healthy living resources that we have in the city of Oshkosh. The male made the most of this opportunity and became involved with the Salvation Army, which is one of those resources. While engaging with the Salvation Army, he agreed to attend their Milwaukee Adult Rehabilitation Center, which is focused on the care and support to overcome alcohol and substance abuse. While it still has numerous steps to complete, the male is thriving the program and has not had any additional police contacts since. So we went from a situation where we had an assault going on, where we had to place charges on somebody, and now we have somebody who's in a program that would not have gotten there if it wasn't for the work that we've done as a community. In the middle of October, an elderly male had two amputated legs. He was evicted out of his residence in Poisippee. The male was given numerous resources from the Washere County ADRC that were all located here in Oshkosh. The male was brought to the Oshkosh, was brought to Oshkosh before being accepted at any of our homeless resources. Our police department was called to assist this very vulnerable senior. There were numerous obstacles that the officers faced in this case that mainly dealt with the elderly male's physical inability. Both of his legs were amputated and he was wheelchair-bound. Additionally, he was not physically strong enough to move himself from his wheelchair to furnishings like showers, toilets, or bed. Our community impact team worked with this male and he was agreeable to return to Washere County, which was his county of residence. Our team also worked with a donor from Salvation Army who also assisted in paying for a hotel room for him in Watoma. Our team assisted in driving the male back to Washere County and worked with the Washere County Adult Protective Services to perform a warm handoff and assure continuity of care. Once there, we also provided the APS the funding resources for the hotel so the male could be housed for the evening while they assisted in wrapping resources around him. And this is an important piece that we need to be clear about. Human Services for the state of Wisconsin, they have an administrative rule. They can't service anyone if their last residence isn't within the county that they're in. So as people come to our city, come into Winnebago County from a different address, they're not afforded the services that Human Services have available to them. That's why it's so important that we bring them back to wherever the county that they came from. While performing homeless outreach, our community impact team made contact with a mother, a father, and a child who was from Appleton, who was now living out of their car in Oshkosh. The family was in Oshkosh and working with the methadone clinic, but did not have gas money to drive back and forth from the Appleton area while receiving care at the clinic. Our team used some of the lights of Christmas donations that we received to get the family some food and gas. The child's face lit up as a Christmas tree when she found out she can get a Happy Meal from McDonald's, which is kind of cool when you can impact people like that. A male subject moved to Oshkosh to stay at Father Carr's at the end of July. He originated from Dodge County. After he was unable to conform to the rules of Father Carr's, he was asked to leave at the end of August. Since September 2nd, our officers responded to 12 calls for service with this subject. He was placed on three alcohol incapacitations and nine of the 12 were welfare checks. The CIT team first had contact with him on September 12th. He began staying at the Day by Day Shelter on September 12th and remained there until the 25th. We followed up with him three times since the initial contact. The team helped him apply for COTS residency, connected him with Solutions Recovery twice. The first time was over the phone and the second time was in person. He typically works from 7:30 to 4:00 p.m. The CIT team is still working with the subject to find permanent housing and sobriety treatment. These are all wins that we're getting out of this. And every time we have an opportunity to impact somebody who's suffering from homelessness, it's a, it's a, it's a rise and it's a fall. It's a rise, it's a fall. We always hope that the rise gets a little higher than the fall becomes and we're able to impact people and change lives. And that's the beauty of what we're doing here. That's the street level impact that we have to continue to do. I can go on with more stories, but I'm here for any other questions. This is exciting stuff.
I appreciate you giving us an update and so thankful for not only the work you and your staff are putting in, but that business owner as well as Winnebago County and their leadership and that, that means county executive hints for the continued partnership.
Yes.
And seeing that value in that. And I want to thank you for the update and continue the great work.
I appreciate the opportunity to share with council what we've done because it is a, it's important for the officers that are doing the work to understand that they're impacting folks, but it's even more important that we're impacting folks. And that's, that's what we're trying to get to.
Thank you, Beal.
Yep. So I got to, while you're up there, I got to be in a lot of those Project Lift meetings with you and I remember, and it really started out as, yes, this is a great idea, anybody but OPD. And then when the nonprofit community weren't able to take this resource team on, you stepped up and said, well, I guess we're up. And you guys have done an amazing job with it, so I wanted to thank you for that. I think it is a model and I think it's going to be copied by other communities. I'm lucky enough, I get to work next to Opera House Square, so I see especially Gemma out there, you know, quite often and get to interact with the officers and the resource centers, resources out there. And it is vital for this community to know that you picked up where other resources left off and you're doing work that other resources are not able to do. So it's not overlapping, it is doing what you can to fill that gap as well. I think that's important for people to understand.
I appreciate that and I know our officers and staff appreciate that, but it also is a force out of council to say, hey, let's do something. Because we can't do anything if we don't have your support to do it. And I know you care about our community, all aspects of the community, and it's really the whole team doing this thing.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Robbie, I just want to give you an opportunity. So biggest thing that Public Works is going to be working on, and I apologize if I didn't give you a heads up, but you're going to be fine. Public Works is going to be working on and continue to work on is Clearwells and that project. Would you just mind telling us what's going on, what's current status and when people can expect to be inconvenienced by that project over in that space?
I would say it might not be the only biggest thing. There's a lot of great big things, but yes, the Clearwells project is coming together quite well. We've got the, we've had, continue to have regular meetings with the landscape design team that's working on the Lake Shore Drive reimagination. I know there have been some discussions at some of the board and commissions and we're actually preparing to bring some information to council on that process. But as far as the actual project, the Clearwells project itself, we are nearing completion of the design and hopefully within the next four to six weeks, we will have the project out on the street for bids, opening bids either in late December or early January and then bringing something to council for bid award in January.
Construction potential beginning then means probably second quarter-ish, maybe third quarter?
Noticeable construction, I would say, late in the year. There's a lot of equipment that needs to be, final work done by the equipment suppliers. They have what we refer to as shop drawings where they say, okay, here's what our stuff is. And then our design team looks at it and says, well, no, you got this part wrong, that part wrong, you got to fix this. That's probably going to take six months before you start seeing a lot of action taking place on the site. So I would say late summer, early fall, before you start seeing a lot of activity taking place.
Sounds good. Appreciate the update.
And it will be a long construction project.
Multi-years.
Two and a half to three.
Appreciate that.
Fall by is multi.
Yep. Thanks, sir.
And if I may, I know you brought, you brought up the Clearwells, but the tertiary filtration and UV disinfection at wastewater, that's going to be going out to bid shortly after opening on the Clearwells. And that one, again, is going to be a year and a half to two years of construction. So we've got a lot of big lengthy projects going on at both plants.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
That one's just not going to be as visible from the street.
Yeah, no, I should have mentioned that one as well. Thank you for that. Last thing I have for Mr. Maurer, and he knows what's coming on this one. So it got brought up a little earlier, so Menominee Park Train. So in the budget as it is currently, there is budgeted staff time, staff salary expense, but there is nothing in the budget for what we're going to do with the current train or potential new train. Because we're hearing about a potential new train, an on-land, like low-speed vehicle type device. So from our previous conversation, you had indicated that without this new potential option of an on-trail, on-road type train amusement attraction, it would have been your recommendation to discontinue operating the on-rail train. Is that still accurate?
Going into '26?
Yes.
That is accurate. That would have been our recommendation.
Okay. So are we at a spot where either we have nothing or we have something new that we don't have funded in the budget? It sounds as though there may be some community support for that. We don't have that locked in. But is that kind of where we're at? It's either no amusement train or potential for community-funded vehicle?
I would say because the funding for potentially building a storage structure is reallocated, that the track train, I believe, is, it's time to retire that. We have had some discussions throughout the summer, again, with our community supporters, Discover Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Community Foundation. And I had a meeting with them yesterday and I understand that the community foundation has already committed 75,000, somebody has committed $75,000 to them without really hitting the pavement. They felt very confident that they could reach the $100,000 mark to purchase the new train for us. The on-land train.
I just want to make sure we're clear. We did a couple amendments earlier, but the unused allocated fund is still yours. It's still in your budget. We didn't use it.
I guess I got lost in the shuffle, so.
It can happen up here. So that's still in your, your unused funds. So my question centers around, last year we had a conversation about, it was two things. One, maintaining upkeep of that train and the tracks. And then two, and really the more important thing was the lack of our ability to find folks to operate it, staff, that we were struggling up to that point to find, find staff. So even if we have an outside benefactor or an outside donor who wants to do that, which I'm, I think it's awesome that folks want to invest in Oshkosh and I much appreciate their willingness to do so with their dollars and their time. It doesn't solve a problem for us that we still currently have and have had of staffing. So how do we solve that problem? Or are we not trying to solve the problem and we're just going to kind of hope it takes care of itself?
No, I think that's probably still, as we talked about it internally with our staff, that is still a big concern for us because if we would go forward with the on-land train, we're looking at a seven-day operation. We think it would be very successful, looking at five to six hours a day. But at the same time, we think the applicant pool would be larger. I'm thinking that we're looking to have more like a museum docent-type person giving a historic tour of Menominee Park. I think that's suitable to, I think, some more potential retired individuals, people that have an interest in Menominee Park and that history. So, yes, it is still a concern, but I think the applicant pool will be larger than driving the track train, basically.
Okay. So, there's funding in the operating budget for people, for the staff time. Currently, there's no even line item for the machine, the on-road train in the budget, and no corresponding funding mechanism for it either. So, currently.
Are you talking the purchase?
Yeah, the purchase of it, and then either whether we're purchasing it with a grant donation, or whether somebody else is, and then donating it to us. But this is one of those things where we didn't get a chance to chat in the other workshops, so I wish we had, but the effectiveness of our programming, and this is a program we offer, this is a service that we're providing to the public, I'm not certain that we're great at the amusement business, and if we should continue in it, is my personal opinion. So, how do we get to a, do we need council to give direction if we want to continue in the train business, whether it's a new one or current one with massive upgrades and bigger costs, or something new? Or are we going to get to a spot where you're going to say, we've got a donation, and now you have to do this? Something similar to a previous conversation we had earlier tonight on getting forced into positions. So, I guess I'm going to put the city manager on the spot a little bit. Do you, how do you, do you want us to give direction to continue this? Do you want us to give direction to, any direction at all, or are you gonna, is the best path that you're going to report back to us at some point in the future? How would you like to proceed on the train topic for the Parks Division?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the funding for the staffing is coming from the revenues, the proposed revenues.
That's correct, yes. If there is nothing, there wouldn't be nothing.
Right. So, I think what we might talk to you about in the future is that, you know, we're not able to do it six days a week or seven days a week. The hours have to be these hours because of staffing concerns, but I think because it's not funded in the general fund, it's done through revenues, I'm comfortable with us trying to be as effective as possible with it, but we're not, it's not affecting the general. So, I guess I don't really need direction unless you want to give us some.
Go ahead.
You really want the paper to be able to write about a lot, don't you?
Just giving them.
I see those pens moving furiously.
They've only got so many column inches, we're going to see what they fill it with.
Can I just address the question about the purchase of the train?
Yeah.
The conversations we have had would be that the Community Foundation would make the purchase and donate that to the city as part of our donation policy.
I guess I'm going to give my recollection of when we voted to keep the train open this year. I don't think anybody, maybe you were a no, so you can speak differently on this, but I don't think anybody's vote was to say, we're just going to fund the train for one year. I think when we voted back then, we said, we want to keep this as an institution in Oshkosh. If that's a reimagining of the electric land train, that's something we can look into. But I think at that time, we were saying, let's keep this in Oshkosh. I don't think there was direction to just say, let's do it just one year. So, I would say that was our direction then.
Go right ahead, Mr. Flom.
I concur with that. I think it was a larger effort to say we wanted to try to continue this, and that, you know, at the end of the day, if we shouldn't be in the amusement business, then perhaps we should not, but we should make a good faith effort to do that, and that may take more than one year. So, I don't think, you know, to the city manager's point, that we're here to give direction tonight on this specific issue, but that's the way that I recall that conversation.
I'll just nod my head.
Sure.
Oh, boy. That's it.
That sounds good.
I don't see another entity that is going to be, I'm not, just nod my head, sorry. I don't see another entity that's going to be over to take over that service, you know, and manage that. It's not a profitable operation, it needs to be an amenity as a sort. We can use the income to offset, you know, the cost, but I think overall, it is a quality-of-life feature in Oshkosh, and those are worth having.
And I don't mean to jump ahead of DJ, but I think that also comes to the conversation of like, what we charge in things to moving forward to this, so.
Thank you. I happen to be in the amusement business, and so I can speak to amusement business. It can be very profitable, which I appreciate on the private side. I have not seen that level of profit on the city side. Otherwise, we would be having very different conversations up here, I think. I do think that what was, and I wasn't at that meeting, I would have also been a no-vote at that meeting, but what I do think is that council voted to allocate $50,000 for the continued operation of that train. What we know at the end of the season is that $7,000 of those dollars were used, it didn't take the full $50,000, and that's because we decided that we needed to pivot into a different type of attraction. Whether it looks like a train, this is a different attraction. And I think that it's worth, before accepting a $100,000 donation, that council does have the conversation about, do we want to have this different type of attraction that might have other cultural elements important to Oshkosh? If they are giving tours, and they're giving history, that's a very different conversation. So, if the vote was, and I'm not saying it wasn't, to continue operating the train attraction at Menominee Park, what I'm hearing is that we're no longer operating that regardless. We're going to operate a new type of attraction, and I think that reopens the door to talk about whether or not a city government should be in the attractions business. So, I would ask, and I don't know, this isn't, this is the direction you didn't ask for, before we accept $100,000 electric vehicle, I think that we should have the conversation.
You don't even have to press it, the floor is yours.
I wasn't here, and I did not vote, so this was prior to my time coming to council. But I would concur with what was just said. I just think it warrants conversation and getting all the details and the investigation of understanding, offsetting personnel costs with charges, and that, and I have every confidence that we'll have that conversation when it's the right time.
Might I suggest maybe, we've been having a lot of workshops and things, but might I suggest maybe a workshop in the future on this one, to be able to have an open setting, allow staff a little time to gather and present some information, and then, we're not in any time crunch at the moment, we don't plan on running this thing in January and February, but.
We do start hiring in February.
But we do start hiring, and so that is important. We can't get too far into the season and expect this thing to show up and be operational and be effective. So, maybe we can do that at staff's earliest convenience, if they could plug that into the calendar for us, and then we can have a better-informed decision, excuse me, discussion to then give direction on. Okay. Thank you. Sure. Council, anything else on the 2026 budget before I get a motion to move into closed
First, I have, before we get the motion, tonight, council will consider going into closed session for the purpose of bargaining to discuss the potential redevelopment and/or acquisition of the property commonly known as the city center. Background information in relation to this closed session was provided in the council agenda packet. Council, do you have any questions related to the background information that was presented before we go into session, closed session? I don't see anybody. I'll check if you want. Thanks.
I'll make a motion to move and convene into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E of the Wisconsin State Statute, where competitive bargaining reasons require closed session to discuss bargaining options, strategy, parameters, and terms related to potential redevelopment and/or acquisition of property located at 101 Commerce Street and 201 Pearl Avenue in the city of Oshkosh, commonly known as the city center.
Second. Any discussion? If none, please take the roll and go into closed session.
Hello.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Nichols.
Aye.
Spanbauer.
Aye.
Flom.
Aye.
Mugrauer.
Aye.
Cecil, you had this the whole time?
And I'll take a motion in a second to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.[1758.85]